Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission Meeting of the 3rd of October, 2012. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start this morning, as usual, with the roll call and TV coverage announcement, if you will, Mr. Vialovos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSPTV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasting Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSPTV, Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
And Commissioner Cooney?
Here. Okay, so the word here has an ambiguous meeting this morning. Everybody's here in different places, but we do have two of our commissioners present in the North County. And also, we'll have some speakers for our main agenda item when we get to that speaking from the same room. Good morning, Ms. Black. Could we have the Agenda Status Report and the Projection Report?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have one item on your agenda. It's the Agricultural Buffer Ordinance, and we are ready to move forward with that item. With respect to upcoming hearings, our next hearing will be on October 17th. The Commission's already canceled the 10th. And we have several items on the 17th, including the Vincent Tier III Winery, which will be coming back to your Commission, the Schulte Dos Pueblos Ranch Lot Line Adjustment, and the Never-Ending Special Events Ordinance. So we'll have all three of those. The next date that your Commission is scheduled to meet is on November 7th. And you have the St. George Apartments on. That's a Del Plaia case, as well as the Youngman Ordinance Amendment. And that's an item that came to your Commission earlier as well, dealing with processing of olive oil. On November 14th, we have one item scheduled so far, and that's the Carpinteria Sanitary District's Septic to Sewer Project for Rincon Point. We will look and see if there are additional items, or see if we can do something to consolidate those items. The next scheduled meeting of the County Planning Commission is December 5th. Commissioner Brown will be absent that day. We had originally proposed to have the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance on that day, and we've moved that to December 12th, so we'll have a full Commission. It may be possible for us to cancel the December 5th hearing. I don't know if the Commission wants to talk about doing that today, or if you want to just wait and monitor that. And that really takes us through the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Although this isn't in my district, and so the question is to Commissioner Brooks, just about the placement of the Vincent Winery on the agenda for the October 17th meeting. So not time certain, but so that the community would have some idea it's going to be the first, or they'd have, they could know that it would be easier for them that it starts at 9:30 rather than at some time during the day. If that would be acceptable, Commissioner Brooks?
Okay. I'm just looking at the proposed agenda. We just have the one consent item. Are you suggesting we push it back later rather than first?
No, I'm just suggesting that it be someplace where it's easy for the community to understand at what time it's going to come. So in other words, maybe it should be the first thing on the agenda. So the community would understand, "Well, I need to show up at 9:30." Because if you...
Okay. I mean, what I'm looking at now would be very close to the beginning if we just have a consent item.
Well, this isn't always the order in which they're heard, or which we see them on our agenda. That's the only reason I bring that up.
Okay. Well, then, time certain, or 9:30?
Mr. Chair, maybe I can suggest we just put it on as the first regular item, and then it will come up somewhere between 9:15 and 9:45, depending on how the rest of your agenda flows.
That's fine. Thank you.
Well, I think that item and the Special Events Ordinance Amendment are both likely to attract some attention, so as the agenda is established over the next week, let's just talk about how to better define when those matters might come up. We'll do our best to accommodate the interested parties. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anybody else with a comment? As to December 5th, I would just express my view that it's a little early to be canceling that. You know, you have a better feel, Ms. Black, for what is percolating out there, but I'd hate to cancel a meeting at this point and not be able to schedule something before year end that is important for us to consider. So, given that all our meetings through the end of the year will be here in Santa Barbara, we have a little more flexibility as to which items go on which agenda. But if you'll bring that back to us, perhaps even as early as the 17th, we can make a more informed decision. Nothing further on the projection report. We will turn to public comment. The period in our meeting where we invite members of the public to address the Commission on matters not on the agenda. We do have speaker slips for the agenda item, but none for public comment. Are there any speakers up in Santa Maria that would like to address the Commission on public comment? Mr. Blau?
Mr. Chair, there is not.
Okay. And we don't see anyone here in Santa Barbara, so we will move to the next item, which is Planning Commissioner informational reports. Anything from anybody in that area? Okay. Don't see any there either. Let's go to the minutes of September 5 and September 12, both of which were circulated.
I'll make a motion to approve those of September 5.
I'll second.
The minutes of September 5 are to be approved according to the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? Not seen. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have unanimous vote for the 5th. As to the 12th, I have a few corrections. Anybody else see anything that Commissioner Brooks?
Yes. For September 12th, on Page 2, there was an action item regarding the late submittal of the letter. Minor, the name of the group is the Valley Alliance versus the San Inez Alliance. And then on Page 5, I know we discussed this, and it was added. I was just wondering, maybe it's the position where it is on the minutes at the top of Page 5. It was the runway extension, and we discussed that, and it's deleted. Was that not numbered on the original? Okay. I think that was, I know we looked at that pretty carefully, and there was discussion about how to add that to the chart. Okay, as long as it's legal and clear enough for everybody, that's fine with me. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? The remaining corrections I have are just commas. I'll mention those to you a little bit later, so I think we can approve the minutes with the change of name to the Valley Alliance. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve subject to those changes? Commissioner Brooks?
Aye, so move.
Second. Commissioner Brown?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you all very much. We go now to Dr. Russell and the Director's Report.
Thank you. Chair Cooney, Commissioners, good morning. Agendas have been a little light recently, but there are some items. There were two meetings since your last meeting of the 12th. There was one on September 18th and one yesterday on the 2nd. On the 18th, there really wasn't too much of note, but on the 2nd, there was something that was on the admin agenda. Didn't really get any discussion at the Board, but it's really pretty important. We accepted two Caltrans grants, and one of them is for the Mission Canyon Multimodal Improvement Project, and that is in coordination with the Mission Canyon Community Plan Update. And we're going to be looking at improvements to multimodes of transportation in that area, looking at issues such as safety, which are of paramount importance to the community out there. And we will be coordinating with a overlapping project that is coming from both the city and the county called Safe Passage. And so it's an opportunity to coordinate and collaborate with the city on this very important area. And in fact, there will be, on the 16th of October, a presentation at the Board of Supervisors by both the Safe Passage and all representatives, as well as county Public Works and PND staff, talking about this project and what we're going to be doing. So that's a nice opportunity because it's grant money that would otherwise not be available these days, and so it gets us to do some things. The second grant is also very exciting, and it's a Los Alamos Pedestrian Circulation and Parking Plan Project. And what this is, is this is basically funding of an action item from the community plan. And there's far too little of that. I mean, we have a lot of action items, and we don't have the funding to be able to follow up on many of them, and so we look at any and all opportunities to try to obtain the funding, and we have. This will be a very key piece for helping make the community plan on paper become a reality, and I think that as the economy rebounds, this is a very timely project for helping to really jumpstart Los Alamos and revitalizing that community. So we're very excited about those things. We'll be working this year and next on those projects. And then the other thing that I'd like to mention is there's a very important meeting tonight. The Draft Galita Valley Community Plan Update, EIR Public Scoping Meeting, will take place at 6:00 p.m. this evening at Vieja Valley School at 434 Nogal Drive in eastern Galita Valley. And this is a very important opportunity for the public to comment specifically on the issues that should be addressed in the Environmental Impact Report. So we will be at the school, starting at 6:00 p.m. tonight, making a brief presentation, and then taking comments from those that have decided that they're going to TiVo the debate and come to the meeting. And that's what I have today, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Russell? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I don't really have a question, just a comment. I did one. I read the scoping document, and I thought it was very complete and very thorough, and I just, I'll tell that to staff tonight, but I just wanted to share that with you. I thought, "Boy, they got everything here." Hard for me to think of additional questions.
We'll see you there, then.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Russell, has, do you know whether there's been an appeal of the Park Hill Estates matter we took up in early September? Or, yes, it was early September.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there has been an appeal. That appeal will be going to the Board of Supervisors on the 16th of October. It was appealed by the Neighbors and the California Native Plant Society. And front and center in that appeal are SEQA issues as identified by the appellantants. So we will be hearing that appeal on what will be a fairly crowded agenda on the 16th, because there's going to be a very important hearing on the North County Jail as well, so it's going to be a very full agenda. But yes, there was an appeal filed by Mr. Chutillo on behalf of the Neighbors and the California Native Plant Society.
Thank you. Anything else for Dr. Russell? It's awfully good to see you. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you soon. So we're almost done with our administrative agenda. We have one item, the Agricultural Buffer Ordinance, and we could turn right to that, but I think let's take just a couple-minute break to get our papers ready, and we'll be It's the County Planning Commission Meeting of the 3rd of October, 2012, and we will turn to our first agenda item and ask Mr. Vialovos to read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the County Planning Commission adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that the Board adopt an ordinance, case number 12 ORD 11. Adopt a recommendation to the, adopt a recommendation that the County Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the Board adopt an ordinance, case number 12 ORD 13, and to recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Final Negative Declaration 11 NGD 4 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Hunt. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jeff Hunt, the Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. With me this morning is David Lackey, a supervising planner, and Stephanie Stark, the project planner for this item. The Board of Supervisors, through the recent Long Range Planning work programs, have directed staff to develop an agricultural buffer ordinance to protect agricultural lands from urban influences. The ordinance before you would implement existing comprehensive plan policies on a countywide basis that speak to enhancing the contribution of agriculture, the protection of agriculture, et cetera. Although there are some community plans that have buffer requirements existing, the proposed ordinance is a result of consensus being reached from a diverse group of stakeholders, including representatives from agriculture, the development community, and environmental community. On May 2nd, the Agricultural Advisory Committee voted to support the ordinance, and finally, we have digital mapping uploaded if the Commission wishes to focus in on a particular area after the staff presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie Stark.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Stark.
Good morning, Chair Cooney, members of the Commission. Staffs requesting that the County Planning Commission review and provide recommendations to the Board regarding the proposed agricultural buffer ordinance. The ordinance would apply countywide. Therefore, before you are two cases today. One is to amend the County Land Use and Development Code, and the other is to amend Article 2, the Coastal Zoning Ordinance. To give you some background on the proposed ordinance, the ordinance implements and clarifies existing comprehensive plan policies, namely those in the agricultural element and various community plans. Currently, land use conflicts are addressed on a case-by-case basis, and the establishment of the development standards for agricultural buffers promotes an efficient, consistent permitting process. Throughout the development of the ordinance, staff consulted with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office and the Agricultural Advisory Committee. As Deputy Hunt, Assistant Deputy Director Jeff Hunt just mentioned, on the May 2nd, 2012 AAC meeting, they voted unanimously to approve the proposed language before you. In addition, staff formed an informal seven-person ad hoc working group consisting of members from the agricultural community, the development community, and the environmental community. During the development of this ordinance, staff also researched agricultural buffers used in other jurisdictions, and a summary of the research is contained in Attachment G of the staff report. The proposed buffer ordinance benefits both agriculture and the public by minimizing potential land use conflicts between agricultural and non-agricultural uses and development. Agriculture will benefit by placing agricultural buffers on the non-agricultural project lot, which will reduce the possibility of trespass, vandalism, and theft and other urban nuisances. Non-agricultural uses will have an added margin of safety and reduction of nuisances such as dust, odor, noise, and nighttime lighting with the application of buffers. The following slides will go through the major components of the ordinance, and these include the applicability of the ordinance, buffer width ranges, allowable uses within the buffer, establishment and maintenance of the buffers, and agricultural buffer implementation guidelines that are proposed as part of the ordinance. Projects that meet the following criteria would trigger the proposed agricultural buffer ordinance. One, the non-agricultural project is located on a lot within an urban, inter-rural, or existing developed rural neighborhood, or an industrial zone district in the rural area. And two, the immediately adjacent lot is in a rural area and zoned agriculture or under a Williams-Senat contract. This is a map of the Los Alamos Community Plan area, and is one location where the ordinance would apply based on those two criteria I had just mentioned. All the lots located within the Los Alamos Community Plan area here are designated as urban, and the lots located outside the Los Alamos Community Plan area are designated as rural agricultural lands. And the red line represents the urban and rural interface areas, and the yellow dashed line here shows the proposed agricultural buffer area. Based on those two same criteria, this map shows where the ordinance would apply within the Montecito and Summerlin Community Plan areas. The purple line here represents the community plan boundary area. Below the purple line is the Summerlin Community Plan area, and above the purple line here, this is the Montecito Community Plan area. The green areas are designated as rural agricultural lands. And again, the red line shows where that rural, urban interface, rural agricultural and urban interface areas are located. The potentially affected lots here are very few, and they are outlined here in yellow. And they are located proximity along Ortega Ridge Road and then East Valley Road. This is a map of the San Inez area. It's a little bit faint, but here, this red line here again depicts the urban rural agricultural interface area. And the brown lines out here, those reflect the areas that are either inter-rural and existing developed rural neighborhood interfaced with rural agricultural interface areas. And the yellow lines, which are a little bit faint here, are the potential agricultural buffer. And again, we'll have more digital mapping available after the presentation here to show you more detail. This is a map of the Orchid Community Plan area. Again, the color-coded lines indicate the areas where the agricultural buffer ordinance would potentially apply. The red line here again depicts the urban rural agricultural areas, and the brown line shows the inter-rural and existing developed rural neighborhood areas that are interfacing with rural agriculture. In addition to the Los Alamos area, the Montecito/Summerlin community area down here, and the Orchid area, other areas in the county affected by the ordinance include Cuyama, portions of Tepesque, Lompoc, Mission Hills, the foothills of Santa Barbara, and the foothills of Carpinteria. The proposed ordinance does not apply to ministerial projects, existing development, farm-employee housing, non-commercial agriculture, urban agriculture, or state and county roadway This table shows the proposed buffer width ranges. Ranges are based on the type of adjacent agriculture, whether it's, and the proposed non-agricultural development or use. Buffers are larger for production agriculture than for rangeland or pastureland because production agriculture utilizes the types of agricultural nuisances that generate more dust, odor, noise, and other nuisances. Commercial and industrial uses adjacent to, adjacent to production agriculture, the proposed buffer width is 100 to 300 feet. Residential development have a proposed buffer width of 200 to 300 feet, and residential uses on small urban lots, which are defined as lots equal to or less than one-half acre, have a proposed buffer width between 100 and 200 feet. And sensitive uses, which include daycares and schools, have a proposed buffer width of 300 to 400 feet. Rangeland, pastureland have a 100 to 150-foot buffer width regardless of the type of proposed non-agricultural development. And the areas asterisk here, the terms are defined in the ordinance. A few other key features of the proposed ordinance include buffers are measured from the common lot line. They are located entirely on the non-agricultural lot. Site-specific factors can increase, or excuse me, can influence buffer width, and vegetative screening, which is optional, can offset an increase in the buffer width. Allowable uses within the buffer are considered either unrestricted or restricted uses. Unrestricted uses are considered most compatible with agriculture, and they're allowed anywhere within the buffer. Restricted uses are considered less compatible with agriculture and are allowed no closer than one-half the width of the buffer. Active recreational uses such as parks, picnic areas, playgrounds, and ballfields are strictly prohibited within the buffer. Establishing and maintenance of agricultural buffers are accomplished through two plans. The first is the Landscape Lighting Irrigation Plan, which ensures elements within the buffer, such as landscape lighting and irrigation, are installed and established for a five-year performance security. The Landscape Lighting Irrigation Plan also requires fencing or another barrier to be installed between the non-agricultural lot and the adjacent agricultural lot. Once the buffer's installed, the maintenance plans ensures the buffers will be maintained for the life of the project through recorded deed restriction or conservation easement. Guidelines have been developed to assist the planner and the review authority with determining buffer widths for proposed project, and interpreting the allowable use section of the ordinance, application procedures, and incorporating site design concepts that are compatible with agriculture. The guidelines are proposed to be adopted with ordinance as an appendix in the County Land Use Development Code in Article 2, the Coastal Zoning Ordinance. Staff determined Article 2 amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15265 of the SEQA guidelines. Therefore, notice of exemption was prepared and is included as Attachment D of the staff report. For the amendments to the County Land Use Development Code, staff prepared a negative declaration, shown as Attachment F in the staff report, concluding there were no impacts or results to the project. Staff received eight comment letters during public comment period, and based on a comment from Caltrans, staff's recommending Section C of the draft ordinance be revised to exempt state and county roadway projects. And this slide shows staff's recommended revision to the ordinance at Section C exceptions. The underlying text here at the bottom indicates, or shows, the proposed language added, exempting state and county roadway projects. On September 26, 2012, staff brought the proposed ordinance to the Montecito Planning Commission. They voted unanimously to adopt staff's recommendation for the Montecito Land Use Development Code amendments. This included staff's recommendation regarding required findings for the project, the Final Negative Declaration, and the resolution recommending that Board adopt the case. For the Article 2 amendments, this included staff's recommendation regarding the required findings, the notice of exemption, the resolution recommending the County Planning Commission recommend the Board adopt the case. Staff's recommendation for amendments to the County Land Use Development Code is that your commission follow the recommendations and procedures outlined in Section 2.0 of the staff report. Regarding the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, included as Attachment A of the staff report. The Final Negative Declaration included as Attachment F of the staff report. And the resolution recommending the Board adopt the case included as Attachment B of the staff report. Staff's recommendation for amendments to Article 2, the Coastal Zoning Ordinance, is that your commission follow the recommended procedures outlined in Section 2. Regarding the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, these are shown as Attachment C of the staff report. Notice of exemption included as Attachment D. And the resolution recommending the Board adopt the case included as Attachment E of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stark. We will have questions. Commissioner Brown, would you start, please?
Thank you. Wow, what a staff report. It's quite, quite complete. But I do have quite a few questions, and it's just on, because I didn't participate in any of the many year-long processes that community members enjoyed, so I have some questions. The unrestricted uses allowed in ag buffers are signage. What did you foresee there? I don't get it. I don't get it. What signage, why would signage be allowed in ag buffers? What kind of signage would be in there, anyway?
The thought was that we are trying to look at uses which are incompatible and so as a generalization, if there's uses that would attract humans, then we want to keep those away from agriculture. Signage doesn't seem to be an issue that would attract humans and there's maybe instances where you have cautionary signs, emergency signs, et cetera, or perhaps just a subdivision entrance sign or directional signs, et cetera.
Okay. In the restricted uses, you've allowed parking areas, including carports and garages, and also public and private open spaces with limited paths of recreational uses such as trails, bike paths, and walking paths. Now, my question is that you've exempted, or you've said that sensitive uses, you've required different buffer widths for sensitive uses. And it seems to me that because the public, or humans, will be using carports and garages, they use trails, bike paths, that this human interference can result in the diminution of the effectiveness of the buffer. So I don't understand why you've said that it's okay to put carports because people drive their cars, parking lots, carports, and it's going to be the same issues about pesticide drift, about dust, that you're going to find in other sort of uses, why you don't put houses there. So I don't understand why that should be restricted use with a buffer because you can have the same kinds of issues that you have with other sort of sensitive uses where you've had bigger buffers so that you don't find those kinds of problems.
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brown. Yes, although there are people, garages and parking lots could attract people, but we were trying to strike a balance with what uses can be allowed within the agricultural buffer. And as we'd mentioned earlier, we worked a lot with various stakeholders from diverse perspectives. And we were trying to find uses within the buffer that would be, that would assist with being able to make the buffer not just a barren area where it's just not used for anything, but actually have some uses that are maintained because that in itself can help maintain the buffer. If you've got uses that are really being utilized and maintain themselves. And parking lots, garages do attract people, but to a much lesser extent than maybe a habitable structure or a playground or something like that. So we're really trying to find some uses that are, their cars and people are going to their cars, but it is a less concern than, and frequented not very often by people.
So an asphalt parking lot is considered a buffer even though it doesn't deflect, you know, drift, the dust, because that's basically what I read in it here.
Commissioner Brown, yes, it is allowed within the buffer, but again, there are restricted and unrestricted uses and so since it's restricted use, it's allowed within the last half of the buffer.
So can you then further discuss the use of trails, bike paths, walking paths? And I just preface this with my site visit to Las Vegas Ranch, where the issue there was you have people out there walking with their dogs, throwing their trash adjacent to farmland. And here, we're allowing restricted uses of such a thing. Again, it seems to me that it would diminish the effectiveness of the buffer. So having experienced that, I guess I don't understand why this wouldn't be included in the buffer when that one particular applicant had huge problems with having a trail, a bike path, and human use adjacent to their property or in their property.
Commissioner Cooney, Commissioner Brown, the, I mean, similar transitory use issue, I think, is one of the reasons why it was in the restricted portion in terms of uses. And a lot of this, again, we're trying to write an ordinance that's county-wide and a lot of these things are going to be addressed on a case-by-case basis in terms of their appropriateness. And certainly many, you know, in respect to trails, often jurisdictions where there's that interface with agriculture, there's provisions in terms of how the trail will be used, in terms of when it may be open, when it may be needed to be closed because of agricultural operations, and monitoring in terms of effectiveness and potential impacts to agriculture over the long term. So a lot of those, I think, individual site issues, there's a process to deal with them. But in general, it was treated as one of those transitory issues that could be appropriate on a general basis in the restricted portion of the easement.
But there are no standards, no development standards for placement of these trails or passive recreational use.
And that would be dealt with, either if it was in conjunction with the discretionary application or if it was a post-development trail easement that was negotiated, all of those would be dealt with at the time of the trail, both siting and development.
Well, I agree, but the question for me is that there's no standards involved with that siting. In other words, an applicant could propose, I don't know, whatever, this trail, and what standards do you use are unknown.
Well, it's going to have its own analysis in terms of potential impacts and so there would be guidance along that way and public input.
Okay. The question about open space credit, it talks about a buffer can be counted toward open space requirements, but I noticed that in unrestricted use within an ag buffer are things like solar energy systems. Now, I have a hard time reconciling an array of solar panels as being someone's open space, yet it seems to me sort of contradictory that we would say, oh, you can have this solar array panel in the buffer and yet we're counting that as open space because it's really development. So why would you include that? It seems to me that it might be okay for drainage channels, fences, low-lying landscaping, but certainly not solar energy systems, which tend to be, you know, development throughout the entire property. If you look at what the county's solar array is on the side of the hill, you consider that open space? I don't. I consider that development. Anyway.
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brown. I think you're referring to...
Number four on page. Open space credit.
Yeah, Section E4. And it does state in that section that it may be counted towards open space requirements as long as the limits are allowed uses and they're consistent with the requirements of the section and those in the development plans, which is Section 3582080.
Right. But that doesn't answer that question for me because it seems like it's this issue of an asphalt parking lot adjacent to a piece of ag land and you've got this solar array that sort of acts as development and...
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think the sections that are being referred to in the open space credit are the sections that limit uses in open space areas. So I don't think you can have both a solar array and count it as open space. I think that's what that was trying to prevent.
Okay, I don't read it as that way, but if that's how staff reads it and that's how it will be applied, then that would be fine. Okay. The overarching question for me is why you've excluded any properties in the Second District when in the Eastern Gualita Valley Community Plan, the initiated draft, there does include buffers, ag buffers, just as what you've described here, ag buffers on properties in the urban area that, with properties that are adjacent in the rural area. So I think that that needs to be included in your discussion. It's not about urban ag. And I know you have a slide, we've talked about it, Ms. Stark, so why isn't, why don't we see that in this document? Is it just an oversight?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, District 2 is, there are lands within District 2 that are applicable and we can show that to you.
I think it's important that that being, because it's been, there's no mention of it in this document. You mentioned all the other community plans, but you don't mention the Eastern Gualita Community Plan. And if it's going to go to the board, I think you probably have a supervisor up there who'll ask that question.
We can certainly add that to the report to the board.
Would you please? Okay. I have some other questions about the vegetative screen and that particular policy section. I'm not sure, can you explain to me why you're so prescriptive in terms of placement of landscaping and other issues rather than being more descriptive about what a vegetative screen is and how it should be applied? You don't talk about any sort of site issues, doesn't say where the vegetative screen needs to be in relationship to the buffer. Can you just speak broadly to that?
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brown. So it sounds like you're saying you're thinking that the language we're proposing is too specific?
Well, I think it's too specific because in our phone conversation, we've talked about buffers being adjacent to food crops where you don't want the vegetative screening right adjacent to the property line. You want it because it provides habitat. And here, I don't, it's not clear to me that this vegetative screening can be someplace elsewhere on the buffer. I read that the closer it is, the closer it catches dust and the pesticide issues. But planting trees right adjacent to the property line provides that habitat that Mr. Lackey told me that you don't want. So it seems to me that it sort of depends upon the type of ag land the buffer is adjacent to, about where this vegetative, first of all, what the vegetative screening is and where it goes. And that's my question.
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brown. So the vegetative screening, to clarify, is, it's optional and it's something that you can use to preclude a potential increase in the buffer. And that's only something you can use in a situation where the buffer is being placed to protect production agriculture. And then as far as the location of where it is relative to the property line, it does state that it shall be at least 25 feet in depth and there are restricted uses within the buffer where they don't want, that issue with the food safety maybe is what you're addressing. We had concerns about that, too, and that was discussed with our working group, so we did include that as a restricted use within the buffer. We didn't want it to be too close depending on the type of agriculture and encourage discussions with the property owner regarding the type of agriculture that they have on the property.
But you've just said that the vegetative screening is 25 foot in depth.
Right.
But you don't say where it is in relationship to the ag property. I don't get that. I don't see that in here. And is that important? Maybe not be. Maybe it needs to be so flexible that it's not described and then would applicants go, well, I can just put it anywhere? I don't know. Doesn't, it's not clear to me after, you know, some discussion with both of you about this.
Chairman Cooney, Commissioner Brown, I mean, I think you highlight one of the balances of trying to provide some prescriptive directive guidance. And that was one of the reasons why the companion ordinance amendment includes the proposed ag buffer implementation guidelines. And I think this is a good example of where we can look to enhance that, you know, what you're seeking to achieve, but the balance and some of those issues in terms of when it may be appropriate in terms of having that vegetative screen in proximity, closer to the ag or away from it, and a lot of the factors that go into it. So I think we can probably add more context to that in the implementation guidelines that would help.
Okay. And my last question is, you've listed as part of this, the ag buffer, you've talked about landscape lighting and irrigation plan, and a list that's from the California Department of Food and Agriculture for invasive and aggressively receding species. Was there any reason why you didn't put the list of invasive species from the California Invasive Plant Council in there, include that? Because it's slightly different. The lists are slightly different, but it's important, I would think, for ag that you don't have certain species adjacent to them that may be more sort of landscape-type plants.
Commissioner Brown, after we spoke yesterday, yes, I just did a little poking around and yeah, the California Invasive Plant Council has a different list, so that was just an oversight and that is a good suggestion.
Okay, you'll add that there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence.
Anyone else from the commission have questions at this point in the north? Commissioner Blau?
Joe, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering, is there a table for criteria of how you go from 100 to 300 feet? I know it has to do with the size of the lot or the land, but is there a criteria for that number? It seems there should be a table of criterias so that people would know, I'm going to lose 100 feet, I'm going to lose 150 feet, I'm going to lose 200, or I'm going to lose 300. From 100 to 300 is quite a big chunk.
Commissioner Valencia, yes. In the proposed agricultural buffer implementation guidelines, on Section 2, this is Exhibit 1 of Attachment B, page 8, it does refer to the specific, site-specific factors that are warranted, describes it in more detail, they are contained in the ordinance, but there's text explaining what might warrant a potential buffer width increase. And also, if a buffer width increase is warranted based on those factors, what are some additional factors to consider before you go ahead with that increase? So we do have quite a bit of guidance in the guidelines themselves.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, or Chair Cooney, I have a lot of questions, so I'll start with the first one. And that is, I saw on your slide presentation that single-family residences are exempt. Did I get that correct?
Commissioner Blau, yes, that is correct.
So any permit on any property that, where I'm just building my single-family residence, whether I have a carport or a garage, I'm not concerned about the buffer, agricultural buffer at all, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So who does it apply to, then? What carport, what garage were you talking about that isn't allowed use that, I don't get it.
Commissioner Blau, these are, would apply to discretionary projects.
So give me an example of discretionary project that's a single-family residence.
Well, if you're proposing like a potential lot split on a non-agricultural lot and that will include residential development, then we'd include conditions that would preclude placing certain residential uses adjacent to the agriculture in the buffer.
Okay, so that'd be a lot split or it'd have to be a subdivision map or a tract map or something like that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. How about a lot line adjustment?
Yes, lot line adjustments. And then also added to that would be development plans as well because they are discretionary.
And development plan for a single-family residence, I'd have to have that win?
Ms. Black? Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, maybe I can answer. Typically, a development plan isn't required for one single-family residence, but if you were developing an apartment complex in an area of the county, that would require a development plan but wouldn't necessarily include a subdivision of the property because it would be a rental project. So that would be an example of a project where the ag buffer might apply if it were adjacent to agriculture.
This is a comment, I have a problem with you requiring a lot line adjustment. We can get to that, you know, later when we talk about possible modifications. My next question is, is what noticing did we do for all those property owners that you were showing on the various exhibits and maps that this ordinance could adversely affect them or would be affecting their property?
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Blau, we utilize just the general display ads is how we did the noticing.
Okay. I will tell you, I have a problem with that and I'd be surprised if Commissioner Brown doesn't have a problem with that. We've had that concern before where we do these county-wide things and we don't adequately notice and then people come in back later and say, they go like, what? I've got to give up 300 feet of my property? And it becomes a problem for me. So I, I'm sorry to hear that noticing was done that way, to tell you the truth. My next question is, you talk about doing deed restrictions, and by the way, in your slide, I think you talked about deed restrictions or easements, but as I read the ordinance, it said deed restrictions, it didn't give a choice. So my question of the deed restriction is, who's the restriction in favor of? What's the penalty? What's the remedy? And who would sign the quick claim deed or provide a quick claim deed if you determine that the easement, for whatever reason, is no longer needed?
Mr. Munoz will address that question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, the requirements for a deed restriction or conservation easement is consistent with the language that's used elsewhere in the Development Code.
Well, that's not an answer, I'm sorry. I think the issue is, I don't know how a deed restriction works. In fact, I took the liberty of... In fact, I took the liberty of talking to a title officer yesterday, and, because the deed restrictions I'm used to seeing are things like, if you, if I deed you this property, and if you do certain things with the property that's violating the restriction, I get the property back, reversed back to me. That's a typical deed restriction. A conservation easement, I don't have a problem with, although my question there is, who's the easement in favor of? And again, what's the penalty? What's the remedy? What's the procedure if it's violated? So I'm sorry your answer, that you, it may be consistent in your code, but I, I got to see how you use it, and give me an example of a deed restriction, how it operates, who it's in favor of, and again, what the remedies, what the penalties are.
I think Mr. Munoz addressed your question, he didn't, he didn't say he was going to answer it, so.
He must be a lawyer, right? That's the.
That's right. We have a code.
You have a code.
Ms. Black has a comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for not suggesting it might be an answer. We would, we would basically pursue either a violation of a conservation easement or a deed restriction similarly to other enforcement actions in the county. I would expect that the conservation easement or deed restriction would be in favor of the county, so we would have enforcement rights under the permit, and that's how we would, that's how we would enforce.
It would be tied to the permit?
Yes.
The discretionary permit?
Right. And if, Mr. Chair, if situations changed and that conservation easement or deed restriction was no longer necessary, it would probably be handled through a change in the project conditions, and then the restriction would be lifted on the property. But I can't speak to the specific mechanisms of that. I know we've done it in the past, but I just haven't done it very recently.
Okay. Just, I'll just make this comment, and you can do with it what you want. You need to take the language out that talks about deed restrictions. If you want to talk about easements, that's fine. The other problem with deed restrictions is, is that it's been a problem in certain title chains that they get missed. In other words, you're going to have the deed restriction now, but when I deed the property out to a subsequent owner of the property, occasionally that deed restriction is missed, whereas easements are less likely to be missed, and it's just a bad mechanism, to tell you the truth. But having said that, you can do with it what you want. The other problem I have is, not the problem I have, a question I have, is the performance and security agreements. You talk about a performance agreement that goes five years, but then you talk of maintenance that's in perpetuity. Give me some idea of how you're going to do that, because I don't, I don't get it. Give me an example of what I'm going to do for a, for a security agreement, because I can't buy a bond for that length of time, I can tell you that. So what, what do we want to do? And how do you propose to do the maintenance agreement in perpetuity on the easement?
We're questioning the question, but let me restate and see if, if I've caught it, Commissioner Blau. Basically, what Commissioner Blau is saying, you have a five-year bond requirement. However, the restriction is attached to the property in perpetuity. And what he's trying to say is, I believe his question is, how do those two requirements coordinate?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, this is fairly similar to our landscape maintenance requirements and establishment requirements. So we tend to pick a period of time where we believe that landscaping or vegetation will be main, or will be established appropriately, and then we don't require that the bond be maintained in perpetuity. And then again, it's just an enforcement issue if maintenance lags and isn't up to the requirements of the permit. So the intention is that the bonding period would be five years to adequately establish.
Okay, well, and as a practical matter, probably the only bond you can get today is a cash bond that you would post with the county. So I've got this 300-foot easement, and it's, let's say it's 1,000-foot long, so I got 300,000 square feet of a, of a landscape buffer, and let's say it costs a couple dollars a foot to, to install that landscape buffer, so now I'm six or seven or $800,000. What's my, what's my cash bond going to be with the county?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, the intention of our bonding mechanism is to ensure that material is installed, and then once it's installed, that portion of the bond is released and maintained. And we ask for estimates of those two components, and our bond is, our bond amount is based upon those estimates from either a landscape architect or some other professional.
Okay, so we're bonding for the maintenance for a year, two years, five years? We're bonding for the installation? I mean, typically, if I bond for installation, I've got to put up 125, 150% of the estimated cost of installation. So now my cash bond deposit's probably a million dollars of the property I just talked about? Maintenance is that? I don't know, the maintenance is, you know, $50,000 a year, maybe, is, I'm, by bonding for five years at 50 grand? Is my bond now a million and a half dollars?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, if those were the actual estimates, yes.
Okay. Okay, my other question is, on this reasonable use clause, I don't quite understand the reason that it's in here. It, I think you're talking about, you know, trying not to have a taking occur, but it says, which will take or damage private property for public use without payment. Well, I don't understand what that's in there, other than the fact, wait, I consider what you're doing a taking, to tell you the truth. You're taking from one property owner and giving some property rights to an adjacent property owner. But, but this is not any kind of a taking for a public use, it's a taking for a private use. So I'm not sure I understand the reason for the language in there, other than the fact you're trying to say that it's not a taking, which I think it is a taking, but explain to me why it's in there and why we have the, the, your public use without payment.
Commissioner Blau, I'm going to ask you to define where you are discussing this issue, so we all understand.
Exhibit one, exhibit one, attachment B, page four, number six.
Page four.
I'll say it again, exhibit one, attachment B, page four, number six.
Okay, great. Mr. Munoz has, wants to address your question.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau. So to kind of answer the first part of your, one question you raised, the county may require a dedication of a buffer as a condition of permitting land development without payment compensation. There's a case, Group versus California Coastal Commission. In addition, that language is, is kind of borrowed from the public, California Public Resources Code, so as to prevent or limit the circumstances under which a taking may otherwise arise.
Well, let me tell you, I understand the idea of, of doing a easement if I'm talking about a zone change for my property, talking about a tract map for my property. We do that today without this ordinance. And, and there is a nexus, and there is, you call it a, I've forgotten the word right now. I understand that that, that's not a problem. Where I have a problem is when I have a parcel where I'm not doing a zone change, I'm not doing a map, and you take 100 to 300 feet or 400 feet of my property and make me give an easement to my adjacent property owner without payment for that. That I have a problem with.
Mr. Chair.
And I think that is a taking, so I don't quite get the.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, this ag buffer ordinance would only apply in, when, when there's discretionary development that, that's at issue here.
Commissioner Blau mentioned the easement being given to the neighboring property owner that is the agricultural user, and I haven't read it that way. The easement wouldn't be in favor of the neighbor, would it? Mr. Munoz?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no.
Well, that's a little disingenuous, because he's obviously the beneficiary of that easement. I mean, the reason for the easement is so that he can spray his pesticides onto my property, and it hopefully doesn't affect my health or, or other issues. And it's also preventing my animals and other things, my weeds, my grasses, from migrating to his property. So if, if, if easement's not in, to the benefit of the adjacent property owner, who's it to the benefit of?
That's a good question. I think you're now getting to the root of the ordinance itself, and why do we have an ag buffer ordinance concept? Are we, are we, as a matter of county policy, attempting to address these interface issues by protecting agricultural uses? If so, then it would seem the beneficiary is the public in general. And I think that's, that's the issue we have to reach in recommending approval or not to the Board of Supervisors.
Well, in all honesty, I can't come to that conclusion. I mean, why is, why is the buffer not on the ag side of the property line? He's the one that's, needs protection from, from my adjacent property, and he should be providing me protection against pesticides and chemicals, other things he's spraying on his property. You know, again, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree when it comes to the county giving me further development rights on my property, or I change the zoning, or I intensify my use. You know, to trade that easement for that benefit to my property, I think is, is appropriate. I'm not sure it's appropriate when I'm not getting any substantial benefit. And to just to say discretionary permit, I mean, we can create ordinances that say, and if you build a house more than 5,000 square feet, you need a development permit. And I just, I'm having great concern over it. Anyway, I've asked enough questions, and so I'll let you get on to the public testimony or other questions from the commissioners.
Thanks, Commissioner Blau. You are definitely raising important issues in the context of questions of staff, but I do think we should turn to the public comment right after we hear from Commissioner Brooks.
Okay, thank you, Chair Cooney. As we look at this today, I'm sure, you know, we aren't, have not, we're not privy to much of the many, well, years probably of research that went into this. I was kind of curious to find out from staff about the white paper, because as I read through the ordinance and started looking at, you know, what I consider, you know, great flexibility, and I think this probably, a lot of the flexibility came as a result of compromise and, you know, researching what other communities had done. Could somebody tell me, really, who, who did this research, and then at what point was this introduced into the process as the stakeholders, you know, were looking at the, you know, possibilities for our own ag buffer ordinance? Because this is attachment G, the research on ag buffers, the white paper.
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brooks, yes, I conducted the research for the white paper that's attached, attachment G of the staff report. And we did that research during our development of the ordinance, and when we were particularly working a lot with the ag buffer working group and the ag advisory committee. So as questions came up, we just were looking at other jurisdictions and how they handle these issues, and trying to learn from previous experience.
Okay, I, I think that's obvious, and I think in the, in the product that we're looking at today, and you did very, very good work. I felt as I was reading through this white paper, you know, some of the other communities had broader, wider buffers, and that's why, when I looked at our table one, it drew me back to the white paper to see, you know, what San Luis Obispo's doing, you know, what Ventura County has done. And I, you know, I think, you know, we are a little bit behind the curve, and I'm glad we're here today, you know, after waiting, you know, for this, and we want to make sure, you know, we get it right. And again, I have, I'm not privy to all the discussions that went on at the table, and I'm sure, you know, there was, you know, a great amount of compromise based on your research, and you really did a good job. With that being said, I had, as far as questions right now, I think, you know, we, I can, you know, get more comment later. I had a lot of questions about the restricted uses, you know, similar to what, I think they've already been put out there by Commissioner Brown, especially the passive recreation. Again, you go back to the purpose of the ag buffer is to avoid, you know, or to minimize conflicts as much as possible. But yet, even the passive recreation trails, you know, bike paths and walking paths, you know, that is introducing, you know, I guess, visitors, I think I saw was the term someplace. You know, it's, it's putting the public into the buffers, which in some cases are only going to be, you know, 100 feet wide, it's not very wide. So was that part of, of the compromise that went on at the table? I just want to know, if you could give me a sense of, I mean, normally I would be all for trails and bike paths, but it seems to me in an agricultural buffer, it's kind of defeating the purpose of having a buffer. So maybe you could explain to me how the committee got to this point to allow this?
Chair Cooney, Commissioner Brooks, yes, we discussed that issue quite a bit in, with both the ag advisory committee as well as the ag buffer working group. And it was our attempt to try and make a balance between the concerns from the development community as well as the agricultural community. We were trying to find, not just the, kind of the two issues it gets down to, is the actual setback, but also, also what are the allowable uses within the buffer? So if we're going to have, you know, a larger buffer, we want to see if, what uses can we allow within there that would make it easier to maintain from a practical perspective, and also an easier compromise so we could move forward. And the passive recreational uses, we felt since they're transient, then that, that does assist with compatibility, as opposed to something like active recreational uses, like ball fields and, and areas where people are going to be lingering, and lots of children playing in fields. We strictly prohibited those from the buffer, so that was our attempt to make a compromise and of it, strike a balance.
Okay, well, when we are having our deliberations, I guess I'll come back to that. The other issue that I highlighted, and it's from what I see, I guess mostly, you know, where I live, the idea of, well, what is, you know, the unrestricted uses? And again, solar energy, telecommunications facilities, wind energy, probably, you know, the cell tower issue strikes out at me, because I know even when cell towers have been put out in the very, the 5,000-acre reserve that is close to my community, we have scars of roads, and, and that's 5,000 acres. I mean, we're talking about, you know, land that might be 100 to 400 feet wide, and it, even though, you know, you have, you'd have the construction, of course, human interference there, there's ongoing maintenance. Could you explain to me how you got to that point? Because I see that this would also be maybe added income, you know, to certain properties that would help the landowner, but to allow these uses, it seems a bit over and above, you know, what, again, what the ag buffer would be trying to accomplish? So just how did, how did we come to this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, again, following up on Stephanie's comments, there's, there was an attempt to find compromises between uses that would not have an attraction for humans or intensity of use by humans, and most of the uses that you just mentioned, we don't believe would. There may be occasional maintenance, but compared to a ball field or a gathering area, picnic area, or something like that, these, these energy facilities, generally speaking, wouldn't attract people at an intensity that we felt it should be restricted. And again, the ordinance is to separate conflicts between ag and non-ag. There's plenty of other ordinances that any kind of a use would still be subject to.
I think, I guess my last question would be, I mean, we're, we're setting I think, I guess my last question would be, I mean, we're setting up an ordinance, you know, for the ag buffers, and I believe, you know, most of us, you know, would like to see something like this. However, as I go through, there's so many, I guess more in the guidelines, there seems to be so many opportunities for case by case, you know, we'll look at, and maybe that's what guidelines do, you know, and we're going from having no buffer ordinance, and we're moving toward having one, but it seems to me that there's so much flexibility in some of the language that I'm concerned that it'll become meaningless. So maybe, again, I'm just asking, how did the committee come to this point where, you know, we're establishing a buffer ordinance, and yet there's so many opportunities for something to be created that's hardly a buffer?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, one of the more poignant ideas that came out of our research in looking at other jurisdictions and statewide studies is the importance of flexibility. What we found repeatedly was conclusions that said, in order for a buffer ordinance to be successful, it has to have flexibility in it. And so we took that to heart and put that in the ordinance. And again, as we've repeated before, the ordinance is also a very strong attempt at finding balance between competing interests that we're hearing this morning.
All right. Well, my last comment on that is, when I read the white paper, and I didn't do extensive research into the other communities, it just looked to me as if the buffer widths were wider, which would come back to me to think that, okay, if you are dealing with, oh, I don't know, half a mile or, you know, whatever, 1,000 feet, 2,000 feet, we're talking about 100 to 400. So I could see if the wider the buffer, then maybe the more flexibility, and of course, take it case by case. But it seems like what we have here, we've gone to, you know, heading to one direction, you know, narrower buffers with more allowable uses rather than wider buffers with allowable uses. That makes sense? I'm just looking at that, and we'll probably, again, we'll talk about it during deliberation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Brown and all of you for pointing out what is a difficult process of finding a balance between, as you said, no ordinance, which is what we have now, to all the way from what Commissioner Blau has pointed out in his view might involve taking issues, to your suggestion that these buffers aren't wide enough, and we really shouldn't have any human uses inside. So I think we've at least floated the extremes. So let's hear from the public, and we know there have been a lot of people participating up to now, and we're pleased to have some with us today. The first speaker slip I have is for two people, Claire Weinman and Richard Quant. Are they in the North County?
Claire's here, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure that works.
Oh, okay.
Claire, why don't you go ahead and sit next to me, and you can use the speaker, it's right here.
Very good. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you, Claire.
Okay. Very good. Good morning. My name is Claire Weinman. Richard, sorry that he can't be here just right now. And I'm here today representing the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. I've been a member of both the Working Group, and I'm also a member of the Ag Advisory Committee. I'm here to urge you to adopt the recommendation to the Board of Supervisor that the Board adopt the agricultural buffer implementation guidelines as presented, and to make that recommendation today. I'd like to emphasize how thorough the vetting process was for this ordinance, and also, I'd like to emphasize how important this ordinance is to the future of agriculture in this county. This ordinance has been the result of a multi-year dialogue between key stakeholders and represents consensus among these diverse stakeholders. Many questions were raised during the Working Group process, including many of the very questions that were raised today, and were thoughtfully addressed by the Working Group. Compromise was made, and consensus was achieved. The ordinance before you provides both clarity and flexibility to allow for site-specific circumstances. We appreciate the efforts of county planning staff and the Working Group members, and believe both the approach and the product of this process reflect a thoughtfully and thoroughly vetted process. I'd also like to speak on the importance of this ordinance, and the importance of this ordinance to the future of ag in Santa Barbara County cannot be overstated. Ag and urban uses are taking place in very close proximity, and ordinance would help to avoid very predictable conflicts between ag and urban uses. This type of conflict impacts both urban and agricultural land users, and it helps to reduce those impacts to both parties. So I guess there is the question about what is the benefit to the landowner of the development, and there would be tremendous benefit. And it's not just one impact, there's many different impacts, whether that's light or noise, and not just pesticides, and there are pretty extensive regulations impacting that. Also wanted to emphasize that this ordinance is very time-sensitive, so we encourage you to adopt it as presented today. In closing, we'd like to urge the Commission to recommend the Board adopt the ordinance because the development process and stakeholder involvement has been complete. The ordinance is of the utmost importance to the agricultural community, and we thank you very much for your support of this ordinance.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just have a question as to your comment about the time sensitivity. Could you explain why we should act today as opposed to giving this further thought?
That's a good question. I think that its application, can I gather my thoughts for just a second? Would that be okay?
Take your time.
Okay. I think that there are things being discussed now that maybe the projects won't be built in a year or two years, but in, I think it's really, if we, we would rather, and again, I also appreciate the question of, you know, is this enough? But I think the feeling of the agriculture community is that anything is better than what we have right now, which is nothing. And the sooner that we get a mechanism in place to protect both, for example, homeowners who, you know, you save a lot and you invest in your home, to protect them from disappointment in terms of thinking that, you know, these fields are going to be perfectly pastoral, but it's a workshop. It's a workshop for growers to make food and, you know, feed our community. And so I think that there are things, projects being discussed now, and that if they are approved before this ordinance is in place, then they would not have those protections, and we will be facing these conflicts in perpetuity. And so if this is in place, it would help to reduce those conflicts and protect both agricultural and urban land users. And that might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, but if that's, if a project happens in five or 10 or 20 years, I would like very much, at the end of my career, for there to still be agriculture in this community. And again, I emphasize that this ordinance is a very important mechanism in making that happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Brown, do you have a question?
I just have a question of staff. How long have you been working on this ordinance?
Well, Commissioner Brown, I would say, I'd say around at least six years.
Six years, okay. And so just, I guess, Commissioner Cooney, your thought is if we were to continue, it would be continued to another meeting in November? I mean, that's, I don't know if that's what you're thinking, but it's not like, I don't think that we're expecting a five-year delay in forwarding this to the Board. I think it's...
No. What I was addressing, and I'm certainly not resolved about this, but when we face these ordinances at the Planning Commission level, it's really our first opportunity to see what we think are very long, long existing regulations, and we don't adopt those or recommend the adoption lightly. So I'm not sure that we will be ready today, we might, but if we continue the matter, it would be into the immediate future. We're not going to hold on to this for months at a time. Thank you, Ms. Weinman. Thank you for your service to the committee. David Swank?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is David Swank with Urban Planning Concepts. We were involved in the Working Group to answer the Commissioner's question and backing up Stephanie. We've actually been involved in this process in a collaborative approach since 2005, working on this. And it was really, this project was a very good example of excellent collaboration. I'd like to thank Michael Hayes, and then lastly Stephanie Stark, and all the work. Unlike the ordinance you're seeing right now, this could be a real model on how you can bring staking groups together to come up with a consensus. And by and large, the groups are largely at consensus on this, though there are some mechanical points I'd like to point out, just with clarifications, to make sure that we have the best possible ordinance. The first question that I really would have with staff after reading the ordinance is a concern about projects that are already approved. Two of them that I'm coming to mind right now is Rice Ranch and also Legacy Estates down in Los Alamos, which we are starting to get indications, maybe getting started back. Because of the current market, there has to be a lot of changes on these projects that were approved numerous years ago. And map modifications are discretionary projects. So our question would be is whether they come back. Rice Ranch is in the process right now of doing map modifications on this ordinance, should it be approved, how that would adhere to it? It would have a significant impact to Rice Ranch and also Legacy Estates. Actually, the buffers, if imposed on Legacy Estates down in Los Alamos, would make that project infeasible. So that would be a question that we'd have, you know, should these buffers become issues on projects that are already approved? It could make them infeasible. And that's pretty much what we're seeing now, not so much new projects coming in, but already approved projects that are being sold, bought by new entities that are then changing those. The other comment we'd like to make is the adopted community plans already have undergone significant environmental review of agricultural resources, and especially those properties in those community plans, San Inez, Orchid, Los Alamos, that have perimeter properties associated with agriculture. And agricultural resources was identified as one of the impacts that were set. Many of these community plans already have agricultural buffers that are established with them. Potential developments that occur depend on those documents to provide the framework for determining if a project can be economically feasible. And if you require this new ordinance onto the existing community areas that already have existing buffers, and this could create possible conflict, and then we could be looking at an infeasible build-out. What we would like to recommend, that this ordinance not be applicable with the current existing community plan boundaries. Should those boundaries be expanded in the future, then we believe that these guidelines could be applicable at that time. The other question we would have, especially in the Santa Maria Valley area, the ordinance is really unclear that if agriculturally-based industries such as coolers, greenhouses, packers, and such would be required to have an ag buffer if they're located in an industrial zone. For example, what comes to mind is the Union Sugar location, where there is actual person interested in possibly doing an agriculturally-based industrial project on that site. If these uses were located in an ag zone, which we see a lot, the buffer would not be required. So we would like to see some clarification that ag-based industries not be impacted at that as well. We also share Commissioner Blau's concerns about the mechanisms used to create these deed restrictions, conservation easements. There's the issue on who that is encumbered into and who that's in favor of. Conservation easements that we have done in the past usually are more associated with larger properties, for example, like the Land Trust of Santa Barbara. I'm concerned, and this is one thing that we did voice during the Working Group meetings, that there may be no one really interested in taking over an easement on such a track, a narrow track of land like this. The other thing also is the, what we'll be looking at when a project would probably come into play here in the future, that minimum buffer width will probably be what they will be, they will be asking for. And there really is not a real solid nexus on what the county would need to warrant the increase of the buffer widths. For example, there is a requirement in there in terms of a warranty of a buffer width that I have concern on, based on any potential future agricultural use. For example, if there's a prime soil, it's grazing land, if there's a prime soil outside that area, that the possibility that someone could put row crops in there could warrant a buffer width increase. Likewise, a poor soil, there's the potential always that someone could put a vineyard. But, you know, sequoia baseline is very clear that you look a lot at the existing setting. So that is one thing that if there is a buffer, it should really be developed in what exists at site at time of application submittal. So that would be another concern that we have. And then the site design section also, we would like to see greatly expanded. They'll be looking at that area for guidance, and there's a lot of mention in terms of site design criteria that could help in terms of creating the buffer. So we would like to see that actually expanded, because it actually is quite a small section. And lastly, in conclusion, in reality, due to the build-out of the existing community plan areas, the vast majority of these areas either have built-out projects or they're projects that are approved, waiting to be built once the economy turns around. There are really very few properties this ordinance would actually apply to existing as-is today. What this ordinance really is, it involves a LAFCO issue. It's an annexation issue. Whenever the cities should, and it's an inevitability, that they're going to want to go and annex in the future, this ordinance could have huge implications. We have encouraged and we have recommended to staff since 2005 to move forward with this ordinance, it is imperative. If you truly want to get the potential for conflicts in the future to be removed, because that's the goal of this ordinance, is to eliminate conflict between urban and agricultural use, that you really need to involve the cities. And we have asked repeatedly that LAFCO be consulted, that the cities be consulted so that a true consensus can be developed on a buffer, and that we can move forward in the future. That has not been done, to my knowledge, and I would ask that the staff really consult with the cities and LAFCO before moving forward. The last item that I would say...
Mr. Swank, you already said you had the last item, and you've had a lot of times...
Okay. There was just one thing I wanted to add, if I could. This was a collaborative effort, I want to make sure that the Commission understands that. And I really applaud the agricultural community, that they recognize that very large buffers would make urban development infeasible in the county, and they worked really hard, and the buffer widths, well, we worked hard to come to a consensus. With that, that's my comments, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We took lots of notes. The next speaker is Susan Petrovich, she's here in Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Susan Petrovich, and I'm here on behalf of the San Inez Valley Properties LLC, which is really is the Peterson family, who are longtime Valley residents. In fact, they are pioneers of the San Inez Valley and started their lives as farmers. I do have a short PowerPoint. And maybe while it's being, oh, there we go. Ah, then here's the thing. I think that what, that the Peterson property that is the San Inez Valley, this thing is not, it's not working. Pardon? Oh, is it not on? Sorry, technical difficulties. Can I, can you just, okay, would you, yeah, advance. I think that the San Inez Valley Estates, San Inez Valley Properties property is a good case study of what a lot of the discussions were today. I did want to point out the two houses, and I don't have a pointer. Oh, it's on, is this not, this, I don't think this, no, this isn't working at all.
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is, there it is. Where am I? Do you see where I am? I can't see the, oh, there it is, okay, there it is. Okay. There's, the main house, of course, is right here. That's 70 feet from the property line. The other house, which is also occupied by a family member, is 60 feet from the property line, this being the shared property line. And this is a horse operation down here. These two families have been friends for a long time, there's no conflict between them. This horse operation has been in existence for a very long time. Up here is a much more intensive neighborhood with a road that's shared by a number of properties, and of course, there is a setback required from any road shared by more than four properties of 50 feet from center line. And that runs right along the shared property line. This is 10 acres, which I think is probably pretty typical of a lot of the properties that will be impacted by this ordinance. So this is probably a very good example of some of the issues. So this is probably a very good example of some of the issues that people were raising. I do want to start, though, by saying that the Peterson family and I as their spokesman strongly agree with the ag buffer concept. We agree with Commissioner Book's statement that we are behind the curve here. We've supported the ag buffer for many years and have seen productive farmland, frankly, including the Petersons' own farmland, suffer from urban encroachment. We haven't followed the ag buffer specifically, and the Peterson family only became aware of this buffer late last week. So we rather hurriedly tried to review the ordinance and all the attachments and respond. But they really didn't appreciate till they did read it what the impact was on their property. Their property is zoned for one acre parcels. And incidentally, there is also on the other side of Refugio Road, Refugio Road is running north and south there, a winery property. And they're not concerned about the wineries, the setback from the winery property. It is the horse property. I think that it's true that the agricultural and the residential housing community, the housing developers, did work closely on this. But understandably, they weren't focused on the issues raised in my letter. That is, the potential impact on existing residences on larger parcels. They become non-conforming. And even though the ordinance as written says it doesn't apply, it says, it doesn't apply to single-family residences. It says existing residences on existing lots. Well, if the lot changes, if the lot configuration changes, then they're not an existing lot anymore. And that's why we suggested the language that we did. And I noticed that in their PowerPoint, the staff didn't get to it, but in pretty much the next page of their PowerPoint, after "thank you," is the language, they took our language, and we agree with the change, saying legally permitted. I think that addresses very specifically our concern that people not be prevented from remodeling their homes. So I appreciate that response, and I think it's fair. But second is the response on narrow lots in EDRNs such as the Petersons' neighborhood. I did consider this, I was unfortunately out of town yesterday, but I was thinking of another way to address the Petersons' concern. It will certainly solve their concern. And that is on Table 1 of your staff report that lists the buffers. The fifth category is for livestock grazing. And horse operations isn't addressed at all. If horse operations were included with cattle, with livestock grazing, with 100 to 150-foot buffer, that would solve our immediate concern, because it is a horse operation there. We do need to address horse operations, because they have buffer needs too. It's just that their buffer needs are not the same as production ag. So I would ask that that be added to Category 5. And I think that would address our concern about the Petersons' property, although we also raise this lot width issue, because it affects other people as well. As you can see by looking at the Peterson, oh, could you advance the next one? Yeah. The Peterson property is only 381 feet wide, with a road to the north with a 50-foot setback from center line. I don't exactly where the center line of the easement is, but that's really irrelevant. That, a 200-foot buffer or 300-foot buffer means that essentially none of their property could be used for another house. And with ag ones, with E1 zoning, that's just not appropriate. They are in a neighborhood of one acre or less parcels. So we would ask that this language be added as well, so that this can address this property and others like it. I do have one final point, and that is, the MND finds that there's no potentially significant environmental impact on water supply by creating buffers. But when you create a buffer, particularly near ag lands that generally have a high potential for fire, you need to keep that buffer irrigated if you're going to protect the residences or other more urban uses that are adjacent to the buffer. And that means irrigation. And that is going to increase water consumption, and I think that should be reviewed as part of the consideration of environmental impacts. I don't, I think it is potentially significant, but we don't know since the MND just completely ignored that issue. And I think it needs attention. I, yes, I'm finished.
Do you have a question for this speaker?
I do, just a question. You characterize the Peterson property as part of an EDRN?
Yes.
Is that a recognized EDRN in the county's inventory?
It's part of the, it's on the edge, it's on the very edge. It's still considered urban? Okay, then it's not EDRN, that's part of the urban area, hold on a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petrovich.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Paul Van Leer. Mr. Van Leer, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners. My name is Paul Van Leer. I'm here representing the Farm Bureau. I'm also on the Ag Advisory Committee, and also I was a member of the working group. First of all, I want to thank the staff for bringing it to our AAC meeting and taking our concerns to heart. And we asked for an ad hoc subcommittee, and they granted it, and we had worked well. It was a collaborative effort. And I would ask you to please, don't make too many changes to this effort. Yes, we would have liked a larger buffer, us as an ag community, but let's remember what this is all about. It's the urban ag interface, and that could change. This is the issue. It could be zoning changes, there can be urban line changes, it could be sphere of influence changes. And remember, all this land was zoned agriculture before there was towns and issues like that. So let's not forget, it was always zoned agriculture. And then it got, the towns got plopped there, and then the conflicts arises. So, yes, it was a collaborative effort, and yes, we, whereas compromises are both ways, but this is a very important, long overdue ordinance that, it's very, very important. I could see problems in the future. There's been problems now, and they're not going to go away. Let's get this buffer ordinance adopted, and then we have something in the books that hopefully the cities will adopt as well. So if there's any questions, I will field them.
Don't say any.
I have a question.
Oh, you do.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Van Leer, having had several wonderful site visits on Los Forest Ranch, where the issue of what the applicant was trying to do with trails on that property, and with your concerns about human conflict and interface with ongoing ag ops. So I guess my question really is a play-off of what Commissioner Brooks is talking about. Is this allowance of this restricted use in the buffer of these public and private open spaces, just because it does diminish the effectiveness of a buffer and the adjacent ag ops? So can you just relate to me the discussion that all your groups had concerning this restricted use of trails and bike paths and so on and so forth?
Yes, that was contentious issue, yes. You know, we, this is a compromise, remind, remember. We would, if, we felt that, yes, we would like to have, maybe it has some additional distance. The farther away from the public we can get, the better, because there's the issue. But we try to strike a compromise with all sides. And we, as the ag community, felt that this is a good compromise to start. So we understood that billing industry's concerns about having something in a buffer that could be used. And we felt that, yes, if it was on the farthest 50%, that might be okay for us. So it was a compromise, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Leer, for your help with this ordinance up to now. We do have another speaker, Christina McGinnis. Wondered where you were, so glad you were able to make it.
I was hiding in the back. Good morning, Chair Cooney and Commissioners. My name is Christina McGinnis. I'm here on behalf of not only the Environmental Defense Center and the open program of the Environmental Defense Center, but also as a member of the Agricultural Futures Alliance today. Several years ago, the Agricultural Futures Alliance, AFA, we were trying to identify what projects or things that we could work on would be of, you know, greatest help to the ag community. And so over the course of, over a year, we worked collaboratively on developing a draft buffer policy that was then submitted to the county, knowing that they were undergoing this process for doing, you know, updating the ordinance to try to address ag buffers, knowing that the right to farm was not doing the job. So we worked on that by committee, vetted amongst various stakeholders. Our AFA has everyone from Clear Wyman with grower shippers, to Farm Bureau, to small and large farmers from all over the county. And we also had at that time Rincon Corporation, one of the folks who are working on development projects. So we vetted it internally, we submitted it to the AAC and the county to work with. And I just want to acknowledge what an amazing job Stephanie Stark has done with this. I also would like to acknowledge Kathy Fisher as Ag Commissioner. She's one of the AFA members who was very, very supportive of this buffer policy. And I don't think that we would be here today if those two ladies hadn't gotten involved. So I really, really appreciate your, all your hard work in convening the stakeholder group, which I was a member of. We did come to consensus, as some of the prior speakers have mentioned. And I think that in the spirit of consensus, in the spirit of some of the compromises that we reached, some of the suggestions from a couple of the earlier speakers to change some of the things that we have discussed in terms of its applicability to existing community plans that have already been approved, I think that that's definitely not what we had negotiated as a group. So I know that as part of the general plan updates that have been occurring throughout the county in recent years, they have all been aware, the PACs have been aware, as well as folks who've been deciding on these community plans, decision-makers, that there's this concurrent buffer process that's going on. There have been allusions to buffers in each of the general plans, including San Inez Valley, Galita Valley. And I think that there was always the intent to defer to this countywide process that was underway. So I'd like to definitely see this get approved. It's been, it's a great day to think about that this is actually going to happen. Very exciting. Most of the other agricultural counties in California have these buffer policies in place, and we're way, way behind on this. And I think, given the fact that ag is our number one industry, we need to protect our agriculture. And I think this is the best compromise that we can achieve at this juncture. I think that's all I have to say today, and I just really, again, want to emphasize especially Stephanie Stark's very hard work in convening us as a stakeholder group, and particularly just getting the agricultural interest, the environmental seat at the table, and all of the important agricultural input that we received. So thank you again, and appreciate your consideration of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGinnis, very much for all your help. Before we come back with questions and input from staff, let's take a 10-minute break. We are back on the record. This is the hearing on the agricultural buffer ordinance. Today's the 3rd of October, and we are the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. So we have completed our public comment, and we're coming back to staff now with any additions to their input before the commission turns to its questions and deliberations. Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have a couple of suggested revisions in response to the comments that we've heard, but we're not going to preemptively respond to all the comments. There has been a lot of testimony, a lot of comments this morning, so we'll wait for your direction on the other items besides the ones that we're going to mention now. And Stephanie, you prepared to mention a couple of the proposed revisions?
Ms. Stark.
Chair Cooney, members of the Commission, yes. One of them is, there's discussion about the open space credit, the language in the ordinance, Section E4. So we have some proposed language here showing with track changes that would strike out, make it less specific and more general, so.
Okay.
Okay. It was mentioned in the letter from Ms. Petrovich regarding the habitable structures that are existing. So we simply, what's contained in the slide here is the actual, is the text that was proposed by Ms. Petrovich. And I, we've added just the underlined area which says legally permitted habitable structures to address those concerns.
Are those slides visible to you in the North County, Commissioner Blau?
The second one was.
The first one wasn't.
Let's go back to that if we can, Ms. Stark, just so that all the Commissioners get the benefit of that proposed change.
Yes, okay.
And I would just ask further on this particular slide. Since, since single-family residences are exempt, why would Ms. Petrovich be concerned about that particular property? Because that particular property, single-family residence, could be expanded and doesn't have a buffer.
Chairman Cooney, Commissioner Blau, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Petrovich, but I believe what she was giving the example of is that, yes, on its face value, the single-family dwelling would be exempt, and this ordinance would apply, but there could be situations where, because of a discretionary action, a lot line adjustment, or a lot split, in the example, that those existing dwellings, if there was a lot split, could then become non-conforming, because the ordinance would apply to it. And so this could be, I think the language in general is similar to language that we use currently for legally permitted, non-conforming structures, for example, that may be located within a creek setback. We use similar language that you see up on the screen.
So in sum, Mr. Lackey, the effect of adding that paragraph would be to, in the case of lot split, lot line adjustment, or other discretionary permit, those existing structures, existing habitable structures, would not be subject to future restrictions based on this ordinance.
Chair Cooney, yes, those existing legally permitted-
Legally permitted.
-habitable structures.
Right.
Well, do you need to change the language then, to talk about legally permitted habitable structures, subject to a discretionary permit? Because if you've got a legally permitted habitable structure that's not, that's not subject to a permit, you can repair, replace, remodel, and expand it, and encroach it to the buffer area.
I think, I understand that, I think there's, you know, we would want to have two distinct differences. We already have in the exception, or exemption section, exempting single-family dwellings. We could add this as a, either a sub to that for situations that, and I don't know that we have any problem adding the language if necessary for clarity, if it's subject to, if it becomes non-conforming because of a discretionary action, subject to that ag buffer section, then it would be determined to be exempt from the requirements. So I think for clarity, if we can add that language, as Commissioner Blau had suggested, we're open to that. But I think it's a nuance that probably would be appropriate to add in addition to the existing language of the exempting of the single-family- the existing language of the exempting of the single-family dwelling.
Well, I agree, those are related concepts. We're just, with Ms. Petrovich's help, delving into some of the real-life problems that the ordinance could present unless it's clarified. So, where we're headed, in my view, is toward trying to identify those areas where commissioners agree there ought to be changes, and then we would come back at a future time with, with all of the changes written as they would be in the ordinance for a final action by the commission. So, I don't want you to try and write that down exactly where it should go and what it should say today, but take your time to get it right. I think we've been at this, as several have indicated, for a long, long time. We don't want to rush into obvious problems by adopting language that could be improved. Let's go back to that first suggestion to make sure that the North County commissioners are able to see what's being proposed here. Can you see this on the screen, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, yeah. And I think we're fine with it.
Okay, good. Just wanted to be, it's pretty straightforward. It's broadening the application of the credit. Okay, and-
If we have another topic we'd like to make, Mr. Chair?
We have more than one.
Yeah, of course. We're at the point where we're basically-
I understand.
Commissioner Valencia, we're at the point where we're asking questions of staff or making suggestions for improvements. So, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I think we need a grandfather's clause on there on projects that have been started and are in the hopper now, and need some consideration for that, so that we can discuss that at the next meeting when we continue.
Okay, so-
Like Rice Ranch and so on.
So, if an existing project that has already been approved by the county comes in for discretionary modifications, it's your view that this ordinance would not apply to those projects?
That's right. That's right, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think we're going to have some disagreement on that point.
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia, but I appreciate you raising it. So, let's, let's mark that down as one issue we need to get into in further detail.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll bring up one more that hasn't been discussed yet, I think, if I could. And that is, we're doing this on a neg deck, and I think that's inappropriate. I think there is such potential for changes to the parcels that this may affect, that it should have a full environmental review. We've heard, we've heard some information from Ms. Petrovich about water, though I think that's usually for me, but it affects so many properties in such a large area, and that I think it needs a full environmental review. So, I'll just make that comment for the record. And one more, Mr. Chair, possible passive uses of the buffer area. Just some thoughts on that, that's all.
Do you have thoughts on that, or you just want to discuss it?
Well, just one, one that was discussed up here was storage areas and maybe a loading dock, something that isn't manned with people very often, and is very passive. So, these are things for consideration, for discussion, you know, that should be in the plan, whether we like it, or we can vote on it, whether we like it or not.
Okay. Just so I understand that particular suggestion, this is, you're suggesting that we amplify the uses in the buffer area to include certain other additional-
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Stark, do you have a reaction to that suggestion?
Yes, members of the commission, on the ordinance here, I have pulled up on the, on the image, E2G refers specifically to commercial loading docks and rear-service areas. So, we did discuss that in our AAC meetings and ag buffer working groups, so that is addressed. And we also have in here non-habitable structures, such as those used for storage, which is C, item C.
Mr. Chair, if we had, if we knew something about the use of storage areas, of how often people go in there, if we just asked one of, some of the operators, we'd find that people don't go in their storage areas, but maybe once a month, you know, and they're sometimes not even that often. So, in the past, we used the storage area for a short time, and every time we went, we were the only ones in the storage area, you know? And there were two, 300 storage bins in there, and very seldom do people go in there.
Anything else at this point from Commissioners Blau or Valencia?
Just the issues I raised before. I mean, the issue of landscape, well, let me just say that I don't like anything in the ordinance that talks about having to, to landscape the, the buffered area, or bond ford, or do performance bonds in the ordinance. Now, I understand, I don't necessarily disagree that that shouldn't be done in some circumstances, if not most of them. But if we're talking about this ordinance only applying to projects that are subject to discretionary approval, well, if it's subject to discretionary approval, we have the ability to have all those kinds of requirements on any project we might want to approve. So, it's kind of like, why are we doing it in, with an ordinance when we can do it in the normal course of the approval process? It seems to me that we're just overburdening ourselves with rules and regulations. We already have a rule and regulation, i.e. the discretionary permit process, that gives this ability to put an ag buffer on the property. And we can decide based on the circumstances of the project, whether it's 100 feet, or 200 feet, or 400 feet, what uses might be allowed, what amenities might be required to be put in there. I mean, I can see agricultural buffers where no landscaping is required. It's in a remote rural area, no one's going to look at it, there's no need to do it, leave it its natural state. I can see other ones where, yeah, we need hedges, tall fencing, we need lighting, we need fencing, we need all kinds of other things. And I just don't like the idea of trying to create this ordinance that's just another set of rules and regulations that we don't need, when we have the ability to solve the problem otherwise. Having said that, at any rate, even if it due to the ordinance, I'd like to see the performance, the five-year, and those kind of things taken out, so that we don't have a situation where we decide as a commission, or staff decides on some future project, it's not necessary, but the ordinance dictates it. That would be the worst of all scenarios. With that, I'll wait for your response.
Okay. We're writing that down to discuss with staff. I think there's a legitimate question as to what we include in the ordinance in the way of guidelines, or for future decision-makers, versus what is written into the ordinance as direction. So, that's, that's really applicable to the situation you've discussed.
Yeah, and I forgot one other thing, I'm so sorry. I don't want to just take up this microphone forever. The issue that Mr. Swank raised about the cities and the annexation, I think, is paramount in our discussion. I hope what we're not trying to do is to thwart future planners, our neighboring cities, from doing what I would call proper planning in allowing for annexations and growth and that expansion. It does bother me a great deal that we haven't sat down with the city, sat down with the Laughco, to discuss the Laughco issues, to make sure that we're not creating a situation that's going to create a much bigger conflict between us, the cities, and Laughco. That does concern me a great deal. I think what we don't want to do is create this buffer, or this ordinance, and then the city coming in and wanting to do some additional industrial space for their economic development, and for some reason they can't, or it becomes problematic as a result of this. So, I do think there needs to be some involvement and some thought process, and I think there were the stakeholders that was not at the table that should have been.
Commissioner Brooks?
Okay. I am looking at, I had a discussion with Ms. Stark, I guess it was two days ago, and you do have a slide, and in the context of what we've, you know, and some of the specifics we're getting, it is quite minor, but if we're looking at, and, you know, I do support this ag buffer ordinance, we have heard very compelling arguments, and this has been such a long process. And it's so important, you know, for our, I believe the white paper said $1.19 billion industry that we have here. And it is about agriculture, I think, today, as we look at the, at the buffer ordinance. I was going through the language of the guidelines, and again, I see there's so much flexibility that I have found in the ordinance, that I was thinking, okay. It was specifically page 11, and attachment B, the site design. And my, I was just asking, you know, could this be reworded, just so it becomes more of a requirement, rather than kind of a vague, it's, I feel the way it's worded here, it's not even a recommendation. It's a kind of, almost like a subjective opinion, saying, oh, creative site planning. And I did see, I think, is this what you created for me?
Yes, Commissioner Brooks.
It handles it. It's minor, but it does make it a little bit more of a recommendation, and something more specific that I think is needed.
Yes, Commissioner Brooks, yeah, we did discuss that, so I posed some, you know, potential change in the language to make that a little stronger and clearer in the guidelines.
Anything else, Commissioner Brooks?
I think in my questioning section, you know, I did raise my concerns, you know, and I feel that after listening to, especially those who worked in the, on the committee, you know, what we happy for us is consensus. There's certainly, you know, a need for the buffer ordinance from the agriculturalist's point of view, I think for all of us. And, you know, I'm really willing to listen to their recommendations, and I would, I would support it with some of the minor changes we're looking at now, but.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. First of all, I do want to recognize staff, because it has been a long process, and it's, I know it's hard trying to serve all masters. The community has come together, and there has been consensus, and I don't think we're trying to change the direction, I think we're trying to just tweak it here. So, I would like to, I have quite a few comments. First of all, I want to just address something that Commissioner Valencia said about the restricted uses in the buffers, about storage areas. I think our concepts are all slightly different. I don't know his concept of what he's talking about, storage areas, but in my urban areas, storage areas are pretty intensively used every day. You see moving trucks coming in and out, and a lot of people there. So, I don't think it's a case where there's just one person per day. I think it's more, there's more active activity than how he described it. So, I'm comfortable just leaving it where, where it is. I do want to pick up on something that Commissioner Brooks just talked about with site design, and this was something that Mr. Swank said. I think there needs to be more criteria for site design, because that's really what is important in this buffer, how this buffer is designed, this site designing. Well, the site designing of whatever projects being proposed, but also buffer site design. And I don't think that there's enough information on that. I don't think you need to be exact, you will place a road, but I think you need to be a little more expansive to capture some of our issues that we have about the minimizing the conflicts, human ag conflicts. I would like to speak to something that we really haven't, that no one's really brought up, and that's something that Mr. Hunt mentioned, and that was about, they tried to be flexible in this document. And as we know, flexibility is what planners want, to have some maneuvering room, rather than to have rigidity. And it has to do with the ag buffer width. The documentation on page two of the Exhibit 1 Attachment B, D1, says the most protective buffer range shall apply. In here, it talks about, oh, the ag commissioner has some flexibility. Well, this, the word "shall" gives her no flexibility at all. I would recommend that that word be changed to "should," because "shall," she's, you know, you could have, as being a good community activist, is, tends to hold your feet to the fire. And I would think that because it, it really depends what's being proposed in the buffer, and how the buffer is being used, that the word be "should," because it may be the case where there are very sensitive uses on the ag land, that the buffer width needs to be wider. And what we've seen in the white paper is buffer widths in many jurisdictions are way wider than what that we're discussing here. So, I would like to see that, just that word changed, because I think that does then provide that flexibility. It goes through a discretionary review process anyway. Planners look at it, the ag commissioner looks at it, some decision-maker looks at it. Does it not give more maneuvering room if there is an unusual case? So, I would like to see that changed. And also, Ms. Petrovich recommended about horse farms in that last section, and I'm wondering if that shouldn't be included there to capture-
Excuse me, Commissioner Brown, don't want to jump ahead there, but exactly what section were you referring to?
D. This is on page two, D1, talks about agricultural buffer width.
Okay, so instead of the "shall" right here, you want to see-
It said "should."
Okay.
Because that's what Mr. Hunt is talking about, is this flexibility. And this seems like a circumstances where it does require flexibility, because depending upon the kinds of adjacent ag uses. And Mr. Lackey wants to make a comment.
Chairman Cooney, Commissioner Brown, I just wanted to add a little more. That last sentence really is pertaining to a discreet situation where the adjoining agriculture has both. It has production agriculture and grazing. And so, it's saying that the most protective shall-
Oh, I get it.
Apply.
Okay.
Which is a little bit different than, I think, what you're saying, is trying to see where you can have some more flexibility in general.
Okay. So, the "shall" in the very first part of the sentence should be "should" then? No? Okay. Well, then, however, I think that the ag commissioner, because to me, this is, she's the one who really understands about the ag properties, and Ms. Stark as well. I'm not sure, for those of us who are sort of far removed from this, I would like to see, to give her a little more flexibility.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I just want to make sure we all have the same understanding of how this table would operate. So, this table provides a minimum width and a maximum width.
Right.
And we're saying that the ag commissioner's recommendation to the decision-maker should be, has to be in that range. If you want to provide additional flexibility, then I think you would need to change those words. But if you agree with the premise that it has to be within this range-
Well, I, how do we know? Mr. Hunt's word, we need flexible, we tried to put flexibility, and this is not flexible.
Well, it's, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown-
Well, the minimum and maximum, but is there a situation, you're trying to have one-size-fits-all? And I don't know about all the various ag, we go from vineyards, to row crops, to flowers, to organic vegetables. I put that out to the commission, because I think that it's, it needs to have, you know, the ag commissioners should be the one who's knowledgeable about this, and so we tie her hands by saying, the minimum and the maximum. Particularly when you look at the white paper, these maximums are huge. Here, they're, they look like minimums. Anyway, I put that out as commission, as a discussion item. I'd like to see the vegetative screening section rewritten. It's, to me, very prescriptive, and needs to be more descriptive. I think it'd be more helpful if it's broader, again. If you have a landscaped architect, look at that. If he's going to be doing a landscape, a vegetative screening buffer, he's going to go, hmm, we're going to do whatever the requirements are to this, I think that he's going to be, this individual's going to be constrained by the very detailed nature of what you have in there. And I'd be happy to work with you on that, if that- to work with you on that if that's helpful. I would like to see the inclusion of the Eastern Glade Valley Community Plan in here, and you've added the California Evasive Plant Council into that one particular section, so that's, those are my comments.
Commissioner Brown, I did do a little preliminary work on that landscaping issue, if you would like to look at it today.
Yeah, could I do that? Yeah, that would be helpful.
Commissioner Brooks?
Adding on to what Commissioner Brown just said, I find in the guidelines on, in Attachment B, page eight, this is the discussion on increasing, you know, going beyond what I find, you know, very narrow maximum buffer widths, but it seems as if in these guidelines, staff in the committee seems to have captured, you know, examples of when the buffer would have to be increased, where you don't see that in the chart, but here it is in the guidelines, so somehow-
Well, the guidelines are specific, I mean, the, the buffer widths are specific and the guidelines are general, and it seems like there may be a conflict between what you say in the guy, because that's guidelines, the implementation, so it seems like there may be a conflict, you say one thing and then you say the other, that's my thinking on that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, the guidelines are intended to help implement the width of the buffer, but between the ranges in the table, and again, there was a lot of compromise and a lot of discussion on the minimum and maximum widths by the, by the working committee.
Well, my issue still remains that I still think that the width issue needs to be "should" not "shall," the minimum, maximum.
All right, so we have an issue for decision by this group as to whether the minimum-maximum range is mandatory or a guideline that a future decision maker could start with or, or amplify, but then, of course, you're affecting the balance of the compromise. Okay, I think everybody's had a chance to provide input, and, and what is the desire of the commission in terms of moving forward? Should we address some of these crucial issues that Commissioner Blau has raised as to whether we ought to be undertaking a different level of environmental review today, so that if, if others agree with him, we could give staff guidance on that, or do you want to defer the whole discussion to another time? Commissioners? Commissioner Brooks, your feeling?
I think what we have in the negative deck is adequate, because what we're doing, again, the purpose of this is to protect the agricultural lands, so coming from that perspective, I feel that what I read in the, in the negative deck, you know, is, you know, it's throughout the entire document, you know, it's saying no impact, no impact, I mean, if I found that there were some places where, you know, maybe that's not, that would be questionable, but I, I agree with the, you know, what has been determined in the final negative deck, so I'm okay, you know, with the ordinance, you know, based on that negative deck, I don't think more environmental review would be required.
Mr. Munoz, let me ask you if you have looked at the issue of whether negative declaration for the Land Use and Development Code changes is appropriate, and, and whether the exemption applied to the coastal ordinance is appropriate, and if you have any input for us on those two issues.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in both cases, whether we're talking about the neg deck or a notice of exemption, it is within, let me address the neg deck part of this first, it's within your commission's discretion to determine whether or not it can be fairly argued on the basis of substantial evidence in the whole record that there's a reasonable probability that the ordinance may have a significant environmental impact, so again, we're talking about the focus on environmental impacts as opposed to impacts to economic development. In terms of the notice of exemption, again, it's within your commission's discretion to determine whether or not that exemption, that statutory exemption applies, and we're not talking about the case of a, distinguishing this from a categorical exemption, where we're talking about those exceptions to the exemption, just to distinguish that.
Okay, Commissioner Blau, let me ask you something before you respond, the, the suggestion is, first of all, that the commission has discretion as to the level of environmental review, and it strikes me that as broad and as pervasive the impacts of this ordinance might be, they're not related to the environmental issues raised by the ordinance. Individual projects would raise environmental issues, but the ordinance itself doesn't seem to meet it, to raise those environmental issues. What were you thinking about in terms of suggesting an environmental impact report should be required?
Well, I think the issue is, it's not whether there's substantial evidence for the, presented, it's the fair argument, and I think that my concern is, is this, this so affects so many property owners, as shown on the previous exhibits, that have not been noticed that their property may be affected by this new ordinance, haven't been given an opportunity to weigh in on the environmental concerns, and I think their, use of their property is one of them, that that's the fair argument that needs a further environmental review. I'm not saying it needs a full-blown EIR, but I think what we do need to do is to re-notice the people that are affected by the, by the ordinance, so there's an opportunity for us to receive testimony, and you may find that you just have absolute concurrence, everybody's fine with it, and that would give me great comfort in going forward with the, with the ordinance, but I don't have that now.
Okay, I appreciate that, that thought. So, staff, any further comments from anyone about the issue of the level of review? I think Commissioner Blau's concern is that people don't know, they don't realize the potential impact on them, which is, which is a little different concern than whether this proposed language has received adequate environmental review. But in terms of the environmental review, anything further to add? I understand Mr. Munoz's comments, but if anyone else has any more, or you do, now's the time.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just wanted to add that what we are talking about here is the adoption of the ordinance and the, that adoption in terms of the identification of potential environmental impacts that result from the adoption of the ordinance, as opposed to when we're talking about future discretionary, discretionary development down the road, which is not addressed by this neg deck.
Okay, anything else? With regard to that, I think as sensitive as I am to the need for adequate environmental review, given this is the ordinance, I think the real concern here to address next, Commissioner Blau, is the level of noticing, and how to make sure we have all the input we need from those, those individuals in the county whose property may be affected, but I don't sense their support for the idea of re-review of the environmental issues and the potential for environmental impact report. So I wouldn't, if I'm wrong about that, I want commissioners to speak up, but if that's the case, I don't think that the instruction today would be to take this back and, and do some scoping to see if, if an environmental impact report is appropriate, or if in the case of the exemption, we should be doing some additional analysis. But let's take up the issue of noticing. Staff, Ms. Stark has indicated that it was broad brush, when, when were the notices, the display advertising notices issued with respect to this long timeframe that we've been involved in? Mr. Lackey?
Chairman, Chairman Cooney, members of the commission, the most recent noticing was both for the environmental document when we released the negative declaration, as well as the noticing for Montecito Planning Commission and your commission hearing. For both of the, for the environmental document release, we did display ads in the Lompoc Record, San Maria Times, Santa Barbara News Press, and San Yves Valley Journal, thank you, and that's typical that we do, we do a broader display ad when it's affecting a broader county-wide type of ordinance, and similar display ad for the noticing for the Montecito Planning Commission, but it was a display ad in the Santa Maria, excuse me, the Santa Barbara News Press and Montecito Journal. So they were, we relied upon our typical utilizing the display ad to reach a broader ordinance, audience for those county-wide ordinances, and unlike, I guess, a slight nuance in comparison, when we do community plans and there is involving a direct rezone or general plan amendment on that individual parcel, we do direct noticing to that individual. This broader county ordinance really only applies if, in fact, that individual landowner does come in and meets one of these criteria where it would trigger the ordinance, so it's sort of one step away from the direct action of a rezone or a general plan amendment.
Okay. We do have this meeting today, we're going to have another meeting of this planning commission, which would provide a further opportunity for public input, then the process would call for review and adoption by the Board of Supervisors at, I believe, two separate public hearings, no, just one? Okay. So there's no question that, in general, the public would be given adequate notice of the adoption of the ordinance, the question is whether these individual property owners who might be affected really understand the potential impact should they decide in the future to enter into a discretionary application process, and I think it's going to be difficult to give each of those individual property owners specific notice of not only the discussion of the ordinance generally, but the potential impacts. It's a problem we have with, with all of our ordinances, frankly, the special events ordinance, the word got around, you know, the winery ordinance is under review now, it's very widely publicized, but I, I'm sure there'll be people who say, I had no idea it applied to me, coming before us in, in future times. So is there anyone on the commission, other than Commissioner Blau, who believes we ought to be doing some additional noticing, other than the natural process of the planning commission and Board of Supervisors review? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my answer to that question's going to be known, let me explain further. The ag community, and we've had a discussion of who was involved, has been participating in this process for quite a while, as Mr. Swank said, I think it's now seven years, six years. So I would think in, in the course of that process, the word has gotten around, or it should have been, because you involved individual property owners, you involve people who belong to organizations, which probably just didn't confine their information to themselves, they may have addressed it to their members, like the grower and chippers, Mr. Quan's organization, so I'm comfortable that while we haven't gotten specific property owners, the issue may be, just be difficult even to, the ordinance has implications for them, but only if there's a discretionary project which would affect their property, so I'm, I'm comfortable there's been noticing, official and unofficial, over the course of this process.
Commissioner Blau, any response before we move on?
Yeah, I, yeah, just to say that there's no doubt in my mind that the ag community is well aware of the ordinance change because it's to their benefit. The problem I have is all the property owners who are adversely affected by the ordinance, and the best example I give you is Mrs. Petrovich, I mean, here's a person that is well aware of everything this county does relative to planning and, and development, and she doesn't know about this affecting her client till a week ago. And I'm curious to know how she occurred with that, and I don't think it's that difficult to do a noticing. You had your maps earlier, where you had your red lines and all those properties that touched that red line, that'd be subject to the, subject to the new ordinance, so let's just put out a mailing to those people, give them a copy of the ordinance with some short letter that says, you know, if you develop your property in the future as a result of this new ordinance, you may be required to provide a 1 to 300-foot easement, in which you can't build anything on your property. That's, it's not difficult to do, and I don't think there's that many people that'll do it, at least based on the maps you showed earlier. But I am, I mean, again, no doubt the ag community knows about the ordinance, but I don't think those properties that are residential in nature or non-ag, that are the subject of this ordinance, have any clue what's going on.
Okay, anything further, Ms. Black? Is the identification of properties that could be impacted by the ag buffer ordinance something that's been done, or would that require additional work? What is the scope of the challenge to give every potential property owner notice of the deliberations of the planning commission?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think we've tried to identify areas that could potentially be affected, and when I say potentially be affected, it's, there's really, it really depends on the level of development that exists now, and what the intentions of those property owners are in the future, so I think, you know, we've, we've tried to identify those, it would be a challenge to, not an insurmountable challenge, but a challenge to provide notice to every single one of those property owners, and to make sure that we've really thoroughly reviewed and covered, but, you know, if that's what the commission wants us to do, we'll attempt to do it.
How about this as a suggestion, I know we're not used to doing this, but if we developed a press release and made it available to the publications throughout the county, just generally outlining the provisions of the ordinance as, as proposed, it would seem to me that there'd be an opportunity for the typical homeowner, at least to contact planning, development, and find out more about it, or contact their attorney and ask them to do so, as opposed to just hoping that beyond Mr. Swank and Ms. Petrovich, whose profession it is to watch these deliberations, is sufficient.
Mr. Chair, we could certainly do that, and I do, did want to clarify one other somewhat misconception that was stated by the commission, we didn't just work with the agricultural community, we worked with the Home Builders Association and others, so we really did try to bring affected parties or representatives of affected parties on, you know, in, in all areas to the table in, in discussing this, so I just wanted to let the commission know, but yes, we certainly could do some sort of press release to try and highlight this a little bit more.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, another thing, another challenge in notifying potential impacted property owners is this is a living ordinance, and as a community, particularly the county urban areas grow, it's going to be affecting or impacting different property owners in the future that are impacted right now, that, that red line will move through time.
Right, I, I think if others support the concept of, of a press release, and I'm not talking about all the details, but just more information than people have right now gives them a wider opportunity for information, I, I think that would be an improvement, and it wouldn't satisfy Commissioner Blau, I'm sure, but, but I think it's better than, than leaving it the way it is.
It's a reasonable compromise, the only other one I would want to risk my full commission is to- The only other one I would want to risk my full commission's address is the issue of the cities not being part of the working group.
Okay. Any staff reaction to that? I know we all have views on that, but if you have any input before we express them, that'd be great. Mr. Lackey?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the guidance that we got from the board originally to work on this was to develop an ag buffer ordinance that applies to projects and to try to minimize those conflicts that are related for projects that are within the county. And as we're moving forward and developing the ordinance and presenting it to the decision-makers, it's an ordinance that if adopted, would apply to projects that are within the county's jurisdiction. It doesn't apply to other city projects. Indirectly, when we released the negative declaration, we've sent it to all the surrounding cities for comments. We didn't receive any comments on the negative declaration from any of the cities. Had a general correspondence with the planning director from the city of Santa Maria, just to clarify his understanding that this applies to county projects and it doesn't apply to cities. And I said, "Yes, you're correct. It applies only to county projects." Certainly, there's the discussion that in the future, if there's an annexation, would something of this nature, if it was in place, be considered? That's something that's speculative at this point that we couldn't consider, whether the, you know, either LAFCO or the board would want to use that as a measuring point for any future negotiation on an annexation. I think that's speculative. So really, the main point is it's an ordinance that applies to county projects only.
And in the case of annexation, if an applicant brings a, an application for a discretionary project to a city in the future, being in the county now, but in the future, subject to the city's jurisdiction, would this ordinance be in any way binding on that city so that they would require, be required to restrict development in the buffer zone?
I think, I'll let Diane maybe add to that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we can look into whether there would be any legal effect of an ordinance in the short term through an annexation. I think it could potentially come into the discussion about whether or not it's appropriate to annex a particular piece of property, but that property's going to be an agricultural piece of property, and we have lots and lots of policies already existing in our comprehensive plan that tend to protect agricultural properties. So I don't see this as being anything more than implementing those policies. And we can come back and do a little bit of research on whether or not there would be any real applicability to the buffer ordinance if a property were annexed in the short term.
Okay. Well, I think, Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
That would, that would be great. That's what I'm asking for. I'm just asking for him to look into it, come back and tell us. I just don't want to make an uninformed decision. I'd want to make an informed decision. So if Diane and the county council could review those issues and come back and give us a little analysis, that would be great.
Okay. Done.
Mr. Chair, I just have one comment I'd like to make concerning noticing. If staff is going to do a press release to the print media, I wonder if you could also do it to the digital media, NewsHawk, I don't know. There's other ones. I'm not really sure, but since a lot of people don't get the news press down here anymore, I go and look at Ed Hat, NewsHawk. There may be other ones up in the, up in the North County that you're aware of that might be important to put that on, just aside. Thank you.
Mr. Lackey?
Chairman Cooney, one of the other items that we'd see if there's any direction from your commission on a comment that Mr. Swank had mentioned in terms of the suggestion that for industrial zoned areas where the ordinance would be applied, so this would be industrial zoning, but within the rural area, we have several of those mainly in North County. If there's an ag-related type of project, like a processing cooler type of project, his suggestion was that that be exempted from the buffer. And drawing the parallel to that, if it was a similar cooler project in the county on ag zoning on rural land, the ordinance wouldn't apply in terms of that, because our buffer doesn't apply to projects within the rural area itself. So any guidance or suggestions? I think we're, don't have any problem if that's the direction that the commission is going for that type of an exception, but any comments that you have would be helpful to us.
That kind of project is a discretionary decision, right?
Generally, yes.
So I'm just trying to think of, we've seen one project like that that's been in the ag land, that'd be cooler. I think there's been maybe one other. And there was no consideration about that. I guess it's about the sensitive uses, the nature of people using it in adjacent to ag property, and drift and dust, and I don't know, hadn't much given thought to it. What do other jurisdictions do?
Mr. Brown, I haven't researched that, but I can certainly, certainly look into that.
The question I would have is whether the working group or any of your other agricultural input has suggested the need for that exemption, or if this is the first time it's been raised.
Commissioner Cooney, members of the commission, I think that's the first time I've ever heard of it raised.
Okay. I, you know, I don't have strong feelings either way, but I don't want to tamper with the compromise that has led to the language before us and change something for one group of users that would upset that balance. But I have no problem with you checking into what other jurisdictions do. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Lackey, we won't settle on that today, but defer that to our next meeting. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I'd like to comment on that a bit. I think in the Third District especially, we do have some ag overlays, and this is, I'm assuming, the type of zoning that you would be, you're concerned on with this, or no?
Madam Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brooks, it's more M2 type of industrial zoning that actually occurs in the rural area as compared to the ag industrial overlay, which is a separate activity that typically doesn't allow those processing. It allows other ag-related uses that aren't normally allowed in ag zoning, so. But we do have limited amounts of industrial zoning in the rural area.
Okay. I'm just thinking, I would imagine that, again, under the compromises that were reached for the ordinance, we will be looking very shortly at some possibilities for processing. And, you know, were those of you who participated in the discussion group, maybe those were not mentioned at all? I'm thinking, was it the Youngman ordinance? Isn't that, is that totally different?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brooks, that's an amendment that we're proposing to the Agricultural Zone District, so the ag buffer doesn't apply to uses in an agricultural zone.
I don't want to hurry us out, it's a little bit before noon, but what we've got is a list of issues for staff to consider and come back with suggestions, as well as some specific language we've already considered today to improve the application of the ordinance. We haven't addressed the issue that Commissioner Blau raised with regard to taking the bonding and other specific requirements in the ordinance for maintenance of the buffer zone, out of the mandatory language and leaving it for case-by-case determination in the discretionary projects themselves. I have an aversion to making that change because I do think the bonding requirement should apply across the board. I suppose a decision maker could, as we have done many times, eliminate or modify the bonding requirement on a project-by-project basis, but it seems to me the applicant ought to know in advance that there could be this financial commitment to maintenance of the buffer zone. So I'd be inclined to leave that as proposed, but would welcome input from staff and/or commissioners on that. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with you concerning the bonding issue. As you've mentioned in the past, we have altered or changed some of those, the bonding requirements. But what's important to me is that there are other maintenance requirements that are listed, that are supportive of, that increase the effectiveness of this ag buffer. And I wouldn't want to see it removed because of that, those various issues, and these are listed on A, B, C, D, and so forth. So I think it's important to keep it as staff has presented it to us.
Any other comments on that, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Brown. The performance security will be released upon approval. I mean, that's our standard language. I feel those bonds are very, very important, especially, and then I think later on it says they will maintain for the life of the project. And again, that's after the release of the bond, I'm assuming. So I think that's very generous, and I certainly would like to see that stay the way it is.
Commissioner Valencia, any comment on that? Commissioner Blau?
And I agree with Commissioner Blau. I think it's excessive, and just it's going to be difficult for people to do things if they're having to hold a million and a half dollars in abeyance for five years. I mean, that's just, doesn't seem like it's going to work, but I'll let Commissioner Blau continue with this.
Well, just for the record, if that's, if that's going to be the ordinance, then my vote's going to be no. You might as well know it now, because the problem is you will have effectively curtailed or stopped any development of property adjacent to a farm. So if that's your intent, and that's your desire, that you want no further development, you got it by requiring the bonding requirement, because those bonds are not available today, other than to put up cash, which is, makes almost all projects infeasible. So your choice.
Okay, understood. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, there's one additional issue that I think was raised by a planning commissioner, and that was the grandfather clause for approved projects to allow modifications.
Yes, okay. Let's look at that. Commissioner Valencia raised the idea that existing projects, the mention was a couple of large developments in the North County that may or may not be coming forward for modification, discretionary projects. And the suggestion was those projects should be exempt from application of the ordinance. Do we have any commissioner comments on that suggestion? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. You know, I guess it depends what the change is. If it's a change to the site plan, it may very well affect adjacent ag lands. It's kind of hard to say. I don't think you can make a blanket statement. So I, again, it's, you sort of have to know what the change is, but if it's, if it's not affecting it, it won't make any difference. So I'm sort of leaning that the ag buffer should be important for those projects. I don't know the particular, I don't know, I know Rice Ranch, but I'm not sure the particulars of what might be occurring or for the changes, or even the other one. But I don't, I guess I just have a hard time exempting them when we don't know what the changes are going to be, and we, it would be within the planning commission's discretion anyway to exempt these projects when they come forward with changes? Or recommend to the board, depending upon the nature of the change?
I think we have a little broader suggestion than just specific projects. It was also suggested that existing community plans would be unaffected by the ordinance. So it gets to be a pretty broad suggestion. And, you know, I think if we're going to have an effective buffer ordinance, we ought to be careful about applying exceptions. It's always possible to do that project by project, but the issue is, in the ordinance itself, are we going to anticipate the potential for some development that might need application of at least the principles of the buffer ordinance? And to guide the owners of property covered by a community plan or one of these other specific projects, to know that the ag buffer issue is going to be one they need to address. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes, I went back and I was reading through the references to the Los Alamos Community Plan that staff provided, and San Ynez Community Plan. I'm sure, you know, and there are others outside the Third District, but it seems that's been the recent tendency, you know, for the groups to say, you know, we, to apply, look at the possibility of buffers, and this is before we had the ordinance. And again, it would be on a case-by-case basis. So I think those communities and those recent plans, you know, are well aware of, you know, the necessity for the ag buffer. So I probably, I'm assuming as I'm reading the ordinance, that this is going to supersede those comments that are in there. They're very vague, and, you know, it's just saying we want, you know, to me, it's suggesting that, you know, they want buffers, and that that would be done, you know, during the discretionary process. But, yeah, so I'm thinking that, you know, the fewer exemptions, you know, the better, especially in terms of these community plans, recent ones.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Valencia.
Back about 10, 12 years ago, when the Rice Ranch first came on, they told us that the project was going to have a 10- to 15-year life before it filled out, and it looks like it's going to go that and possibly more. And to go back now and set rules for all these people, it seems to be more restrictive than trying to help. I mean, I see my mission here as trying to help people get through the goals and policies of the county in good development, but in, just for the sake of making restrictions and making it difficult for people to develop, it doesn't seem like I'm doing the right thing. I hope that some of these things are not vindictive. It seems like we're trying to restrict people from doing things, and we should be trying to help them of how they can get through these things that are creating problems. And I see the, just a little diffident twist here on what we're doing. For instance, the grandfather clause, there shouldn't be any question about it. It should, they should just be exempt from all these new rules. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Well, and I appreciate your thoughts, as always, Commissioner Valencia. Just want to point out, and this, I guess, expresses my view on it, that if these prior approved developments don't come in to change their projects, this ordinance is going to have no impact on them, whatever. We're only talking about, should they decide for economic or other reasons that they want to change the project, then isn't it appropriate that we take into account the existence of surrounding agriculture, if at least our goal here is to preserve that agriculture and not have, not have housing developments take over the entire county? I mean, I think that's what it comes down to. It's not regulation just for the sake of regulation, but we're trying to preserve something that is not only economically, but elementally important to this county.
I think there's a lot of truth in what you say, Mr. Chair, but I think we have to be extremely careful that we're not restrictive. The economy in this country, especially Santa Barbara County, is in terrible shape, and adding restrictions that would hinder people to do development is just going to even add more to that. I think that we just need to be extremely careful of what we do. And I understand what you're saying. you're saying, you know, and I want to be protective also, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're not just making rules for the sake of making rules.
If I could weigh in for just a little bit here, I think the concern is, like with Ranch, Rice Ranch Road, if we were to have language that said they might be subject to the new regulation if they made a substantial change in their development, that might be okay. The problem is they're going to make some change because what was designed and approved seven or eight years ago doesn't work today, the world has changed, the economies have changed. And so now, the new subsequent developer that's going to come in there, if we don't exempt him from this new ordinance, there's now this great uncertainty that you could damage his property economically by millions of dollars. And so, you, you basically thwart the value of the property and thwart any opportunity to do development. I don't think that's your intention, but it's kind of like if you don't have some certainty, things aren't going to move forward. I mean, that's the whole problem in the U.S. today, right? We don't have certainty, we're all waiting until November 6th to hope we have certainty for something. But, you know, it's like, that's the problem. So, perhaps we could do it to where we say they're exempt unless they make a substantial change in the development process. And what we've seen so far with Rice Ranch is taking out condos, putting in single-family detached housing. I wouldn't consider that a substantial change. Now, if they came back and said we want 50 more units in the project, that's a substantial change. That, I would agree, we have the right to go look at everything over again.
Well, you're, as usual, a passionate advocate for, for a particular position and, the issue of certainty is certainly floating in there on both sides. But I think to move forward with the ordinance now, and, and we probably disagree as to whether we should be looking in the future at Rice Ranch or any other applicant, case by case, or in this ordinance is, is one we disagree on. It's certainly valuable for this point to be discussed and, and I'm sure points like this have been discussed in, in the working committees leading up to this commission's consideration. So, for now, well, I think we'll move forward without change to that issue since, since three of us at least feel that we shouldn't make the exceptions in advance, but, but we're certainly going to be open, to the extent any of us is still here, to the considerations that a project needs to be modified and isn't impacting agricultural operations. Ms. Black has a comment?
Mr. Chair, since I, I think this issue is very likely to come up at the board as well, between now and whenever you continue this too, we'll do a little bit of initial research on Rice Ranch and a couple of other projects that could be affected, because we do know there are several projects that are either in or about to come in to modify their entitlements. Rice Ranch is an interesting case. It, it borders agricultural grazing land and the Orchid Community Plan already has a standard for 100-foot buffer, and this proposed ordinance would have a buffer of between 100 and 150 feet. So, perhaps the issue is not that significant here, but I think it would help just to, to have a little bit of an idea as to how this might apply. So, we'll, we'll do that between now and your next hearing.
That, that specific case might not be impacted, but I think Commissioner Blau's point and Commissioner Valencia's point is that there may be other projects around the county that, that could be impacted by the ordinance and, and should we apply a blanket exemption to them regardless of that? That's really the issue that I think we're addressing here. Commissioners, I suggest then we pick a time to continue this meeting too, for further consideration and, and get staff back to work on the modifications. Ms. Black, we're full on the 17th, are we not?
Mr. Chair, we have projected four hours and that may be light, given the, I think probably all three of those cases could have some controversy associated with them. So, the next hearing date available would be November 7th, and that's certainly possible, or November 14th. I will not be with the commission those two days, just so you know.
Well, should we just cancel both meetings?
No, I didn't suggest that at all. I just wanted you to know.
I suggest December.
7th, is that your motion, Commissioner Blau?
December 5th would be my motion, then Diane will be back, correct Diane?
I won't be here the 5th, I would prefer to see it in November, to see we continue this to November.
November 14th, is that the date? I don't have the calendar in front of me.
That's fine, November 14th would be good.
Okay, then this, this commission continues to November 14th.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the agricultural buffer ordinance discussion to the 14th of November, our second meeting in November. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia, I didn't hear, did you vote in favor?
Aye, aye.
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous, okay.
Here, the North County, anyway.
Yeah, no, it's unanimous all the way through the county.
Okay.
All right, we have the continuance. Is there anything further, Ms. Black, for today's meeting?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.